Good afternoon, and welcome to the National Capitol Planning Commission's October 6, 2011 meeting. And if you would please, all stand with me and join in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with every equal justice for all.
Thank you. Notice to all that today's proceedings, as usual, are being livestreamed on the web. In noting the presence of a quorum, we'll call the meeting to order and proceed along the agenda as has been advertised. Agenda item number one is report of the Chairman, and I'll simply say that we had a -- on September 13th, we had a very successful full day, one-day full day, Interagency Security Task Force meeting where we have been looking at the incorporation of good design principles with appropriate security measures for the federal triangle area. On September 13th, we -- Bill Dowd and Mina Wright and Austin Smith of the Interagency Security Committee all had presentations, so those were representing three good partnership agencies. The morning session, Brian Michael Jenkins, who's a senior advisor and security expert at RAND, was a keynote speaker, and he talked about the evolving nature of the threat that we are -- we have to be very mindful of in the nation's capital. We also had DHS briefings or presentation. The MITRE Corporation was here and had their experts discussing a systems approach to geographic areas. The afternoon session focused not on the security side but on the urban design side. Frank Giblin of GSA, Alan Ward of Sasaki, Rob Rogers of Rogers Marvel, and Tom Veneer of AIA were all here and talked about techniques and very good examples of where we have had successful security and planning efforts in an urban landscape and other places. Then we had a open roundtable discussion at the end of the day. So it was a very good day, very productive. We had all the right people, the key people, key agencies involved, and I have to give a lot of credit to Bill Dowd and his team for organizing a very good event. That ends the Chairman's report. Any questions on that? Hearing none. Agenda item number two is the report of the Executive Director, Mr. Costner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good afternoon. I just have a few announcements to make. First of all, in response to the recent commission retreat that we held earlier this year, as well as the Plain Writing Act, staff is proposing a new format for agency's recommendations and actions. I've attached samples that are included in your packet of these new -- of this new proposal. The new format is designed to make the documents easier to read and understand by highlighting key information and better outlining our review process. In addition to the formatting changes, staff is focusing on writing recommendations in a more clear and concise manner and incorporating graphics more effectively. So we welcome your feedback on the new format. If you have any comments, please send those to Deborah Young. I will also solicit feedback on the new format from the public over the next 30 days through our website. After the feedback period and any revisions that we might make, we anticipate using this format effective January 2012. In addition, on Tuesday, October 18th, at 6:30 PM, NCPC and the Embassy of Canada welcome Canadian architect Bing Tom, designer of DC's new Arena Stage. Mr. Tom will explore the legacy of mid-century modernism in Washington and how we could preserve the recent past while embracing the future. This speaker series event will be held at the Embassy of Canada, right here on Pennsylvania Avenue, and we hope the commission and members of the public are able to attend. And finally, some very good news. The Monumental Core Framework Plan was selected for an American Society of Landscape Architects' 2011 Professional Honor Award, only one of 37 awarded nationally. This is a very important award for the commission. I'd like to thank the commission for their support of this plan, and also to the project staff, Bill Dowd, Elizabeth Miller, Shane Detman, Stephanie Brown, Paul Jutton, also our partners at the Commission of Fine Arts, and also our consulting team, I see Joe Brown and the audience of AECOM, and their staff, Alan Harwood and Ryan Beaumont. So congratulations to you all.
Terrific, thank you.
That concludes my report.
And here's the announcement on the Arena Stage discussion. We're doing it in conjunction with the Embassy of Canada. It'll also be, if it's not already, on NCP's website, so we hope we have a good turnout for that. Item three on the agenda is the legislative update. Ms. Skylar?
I have nothing to report, sir.
Thank you very much. And then, item agenda -- agenda item number four is the consent calendar. We have five items. Item 4A is the electric generating equipment at Fort McNair. 4B is the electric generating equipment at Joint Base Meyer-Henderson Hall. 4C is the water tank in Building 10 wireless communications antennas at the Naval Surface Warfare Center. 4D is site improvements and perimeter security at the Federal Reserve Building. And last, 4E is the temporary emergency boiler stack system at Central Heating Refrigeration Plant. Any questions on the consent calendar? Hearing none, is there a motion on the consent calendar? It's been moved and seconded, all in favor of adopting the consent calendar. Say aye. Oppose, no. It's adopted. Next on the agenda is a terrific presentation on the Eisenhower Memorial. This is an information session. No votes being taken today. It's our opportunity to hear from the design team and others on their progress, what has changed since the last time they were before us, what some of the outstanding remaining issues there might be, and to have a general conversation. Again, no votes are being taken today. It's an information session only. The Section 106 process is still going on, and that's been very productive. Issues are being resolved in that very good forum, and so it's moving on. And we have, to kick it off, Shane Detman from staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the commission, and good afternoon. Staff's going to be giving you a very, very, very brief introduction on the steps that have been taken thus far in establishing this memorial to President Dwight D. Eisenhower, and then we'll be handing it off to the design team for its update on its -- on the refinements that it's made with its preferred alternative and the very -- the positive progress that it has made on that particular alternative since the commission last saw this project back in February. And so again, very, very quickly, Congress authorized the development of -- establishment of this memorial back in 1999 through passage of a public law. It also, in addition to authorizing the creation of the memorial, created the Dwight D. Eisenhower Memorial Commission, which you see there is a 12-member commission. You see that they make up there. Subsequent to the original authorization, Congress passed two secondary pieces of legislation, one which essentially authorized the location of the memorial within Washington, DC or its environs. And then lastly, back in May 2006, Congress passed a law to authorize the memorial within Area 1, which is identified in the 2003 amendments of the Commemorative Works Act. Happening concurrently with the congressional acts, the Eisenhower Memorial Commission conducted a thorough site selection process that looked at 26 sites and ultimately selected what was referred to as the Maryland Avenue Site, which is highlighted in this orange circle there on the map. This is just a closer look at the site. It's bound by Independence Avenue, 4th and 6th Street in the Department of Education Headquarters Building on the south. The Maryland Avenue right-of-way runs through the middle of the site, and you can see the buildings -- the site in relation to the buildings that surround it. In September 2006, the commission approved this site with a collection of design principles that were also subsumed into the commission's NEPA Fonzie for this project. The commission last saw this project in February 2011. This is the site plan that the commission took an action on in addition to two other alternatives that the commission reviewed and provided comments on. Actually, no formal action has been taken on this project, and this is just a picture of the model. And then finally, the last slide, this is -- I'm not going to go through this in detail, but this is the comments that the commission offered on this particular alternative of the project, and these were provided to you in advance of today's meeting, and hopefully you had a chance to take a look at them. Their comments that were provided were relative to the design principles that were adopted at the site selection stage. And so with that, hopefully that gives you a little bit of background on the project, and I'd like to hand it over to the design team for them to give you an update on the developments that have been made to the preferred alternative since February.
Good afternoon, welcome, and please identify yourself.
I'm Carl Riddell, Executive Director of the Eisenhower Memorial Commission. Mr. Chairman, commissioners, as a representative of the Eisenhower Memorial Commission, I'm accompanied today by the Chairman of our commission, Rocco Siciliano from Beverly Hills, California, also Commissioner Alfred Godoldig from New York City, and also Senior Advisor to the Commission, Professor Louis Galambos of Johns Hopkins University, who advises us out of the context of his role as the editor of the 21-volume papers of Dwight David Eisenhower, which were completed in the year 2001. Speaking to you today, taking advantage of some of the information you've already received, the importance of us being an expression of the will of the American people in that the Congress of the United States established us roughly 50 years, a half-century after President Eisenhower completed his lifelong service to the country of the United States. Without elaborating on the makeup of the commission itself, for us as a small staff, it's been a great advantage to have the continuity of the commission's leadership. We've especially been pleased with the kind of knowledge and in-depth experience and support we get from our Vice Chairman, Senator Daniel Inouye from Hawaii, who, you know, has been part of multiple memorialization projects here in the capital of the United States and elsewhere in the United States. We are entering the second decade of our existence. We held our first meeting in the year 2001, so we're conscious of the passage of time in a particular way in the context of other presidential memorials as well. But particularly from the year 2005, we've moved with what I would call rapid but deliberate speed. And that speed has been due to the fact that we've had this continuity of leadership from our congressional leaders. It has also been due to the fact that there seems to be a timeliness with this president's memorialization as the realization of the substance of his contributions have continued to grow. But the reason perhaps more pertinent to our meeting today is that the design team has proven itself to be flexible, proven itself to be responsive, and has had in mind the multiple concerns that are part of such a complex project such as this. So the fact that Gary Partners, AECOM, Gilbane Construction, GSA, and others have worked so well together, and that we've enjoyed the leadership of the National Park Service as our lead agency, has meant that we've moved faster perhaps than others would have anticipated. The design of the memorial has benefited from the review process in a very particular way. You might imagine I would especially be mindful of the first meeting with the National Capitol Memorial Advisory Commission. And as a result of that review process, we were driven to verify and authenticate and validate why such a preeminent location should be there in perpetuity for this citizen of the United States, Dwight David Eisenhower. And in that process, we've learned a great deal about the president, and the thematic context of this site is dramatically appropriate. Eisenhower had a lifelong personal commitment to freedom, and he knew that freedom didn't mean anything unless you were healthy, educated, and had a sense of well-being, and he created the Department of Health, Education, and Welfare, and I could go on speaking about that thematic context. So having to meet and consult with the National Capitol Memorial Advisory Commission was appropriate, helpful, and useful. We were in much the same posture, of course, as you well know, with the Commission of Fine Arts, and we were directly affected, I believe, by their guidance on the artistic quality and the aesthetic direction of the design and where it should go. And in fact, just this past month, we had a meeting which was summarized in a good letter of the 22nd of September, copies of which we have available if anyone would care to see and look at that. But at that meeting, they gave strong support to the revised configuration that has been developed by the design team. They commended the overall height and scale of the columns and of the tapestries, and they expressed support for the landscape image, which is such an integral part of the tapestry. So we are really here today to speak to you, to experience the same advantage that we have with the other review dimensions of what we're about, to benefit from that and to move forward with this memorial to such a great American. In a very simple way, he is one of the best pieces of evidence that we have that the American experiment works. He came from no advantage of family, no advantage of money, a pretty straightforward education, and he came to enjoy the respect and the affection of not only his fellow citizens but of much of the world. It's a great story to share at this particular time in our history. We, as a result of the design team's professionalism and effectiveness, are on budget and on schedule. We would like to continue this collaborative spirit, which has gotten us to this stage, with your assistance and with your help, but I feel a particular sense of urgency and excitement about where we're at, and that's driven in part by my own age, I guess, perishability as time goes on, because our leadership is still rooted in the war that Eisenhower led so many thousands of Americans to their deaths in the process of destroying the German war machine. These people pass by the hundreds daily. Two of my senior leaders are combat veterans of World War II. Senator Daniel Inouye, as you know, daily carries to his meetings the missing arm as a souvenir of that. In a unit alongside Senator Inouye's unit was our chairman's unit, the 10th Mountain Division in the Italian Theater. These gentlemen look at me and say, "Press on, let's get it done." And of course, being a bit younger, I'm aware of the Korean War veterans. Eisenhower ended effectively two wars, the Korean War being the last. So we appreciate your support, your cooperation, and we are really privileged and pleased to be with you here today. Frank?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, I'm honored to be back again. Oh, are you taking it off? We did spend a lot of time with the various commissions, various stakeholders, and we listened carefully to their comments and have responded as best we can, retaining the integrity of the original design. The idea of the original design was to create a precinct that unified the three major buildings that surround it and -- Sorry. Okay. What's that? Okay. And that became the idea of a tapestry, and we've done a lot of research since then. Something like that has never been done before, as far as I know. And we've gone far and wide to Japan and China, Rhode Island, Germany, wherever people weave these things, and have come up with several possible solutions to them. And one of them, we have evidence of here, or a couple of them. What became crucial to this was to create an image that had transparency so that it didn't affect the views from the education building, especially out to the outdoors. We also wanted to create a special kind of entrance to the Department of Education and created a walkway between the tapestry and the building, which is very -- kind of a very special kind of space. In the original scheme, which I don't have a slide of, but we -- these tapestries were parallel to Independence Avenue, if you recall, and the main tapestry came right out to the streets on each side. Yeah. Oh, here's the plan. So there are the original plan and the original tapestries with the columns. The columns were designed structurally. That's what set the size of them. They were originally -- in our original design, the engineers said they had to be 12 feet in diameter, and since then, we've refined them to 11 feet, so we slimmed them down. I think there were comments along the way that people thought they should be slimmer, so now they are, and there's good reason to be. We pulled back the main tapestry to expose the education building on both sides so that somebody coming -- passing by sees it, and it creates a more generous entrance on each side. The tapestries perpendicular to the main tapestry and to Independence Avenue seem more appropriate in creating a space in the garden and enclosing it. The imagery of the tapestry has been a lot of time, a lot of discussion. We've had Eisenhower experts, as you know, Lou Galambos, who's the preeminent Eisenhower scholar, and others, discussing over and over what the appropriate imageries were. We started out very early and before we landed in the competition, before we presented the final competition, with an image of the Normandy beachhead, which is quite a beautiful image. Along the way, that seemed to be focusing Eisenhower on war, and he was much more than that in his own memoirs. He doesn't downplay it, but he's uncomfortable with war, as we all are. So more and more, we realized that this was a man who felt his roots from Abilene, Kansas, even though he wasn't born there. He talked about it all the time. In his Guildhall speech in London, he mentioned Abilene several times. We went there, we saw the site, we spent time, and it had a resonance for this man's core and essence as a -- his humility, his sense of where he came from, the heartland of America, 400 miles from the geographic center of the United States. And it was so compelling to us that we explored this idea on the tapestry. The trees are sycamore trees that are native to Abilene, and by the way, are very comfortable in Washington, DC. The idea of adding to his story, the issue of Eisenhower the soldier, Eisenhower the president, is very much on our minds, and we've focused on the Guildhall speech and his final speech when he left the presidency. We're working with Lou Galambos and our advisors to determine just how we should represent that. We've shown it. We have the pictures of him with the soldiers, with his men, which is very compelling, and we have pictures of him giving speeches as a president. We played with -- we tried 10 or 12 or more of the obvious things one does when you do set up a photograph like this. We explored his image on those tapestries. We explored his image as a soldier, and none of them had the resonance that this had for this site, for this time, this place. And so we focused on solving the issues of the tapestry, the imagery of the tapestry, and then how to represent Eisenhower. And in his speech, when he returned to Abilene, he talks in very modest humility, et cetera. He doesn't go in and blow his horn about, "I'm the great guy that solved all these things." He talks about the barefoot boy who went on this odyssey, and, "My God, what an odyssey it was, and what I've experienced." And it was so beautifully written, and I still come back here, still thinking myself as the barefoot boy from Abilene. We searched through the photographs, and we found this one photograph of him. I don't know how old he was, but the young Eisenhower. And we're exploring the possibility of making a three-dimensional representation of that that will sit in kind of the center of the main tapestry on a block, which will have the carved-in-the-stone, the speech, the barefoot boy from Abilene, and this image or something like it. And we've been exploring how to make that and who makes it, and we're well down the way to getting there. So it's not just another bronze statue so that it has resonance and feeling to it, and that's what we hope to achieve. The issue of the military Eisenhower and the President Eisenhower, we have several locations to place that. We analyzed putting him in these gardens so they'd be separate. The idea that you separate those issues seems to lead to three memorials instead of one, and we're very focused on that. I lived through Larry Halpern's years on the Roosevelt Memorial, and it did get -- it became episodic and different. It has a beautiful garden. We were trying to emulate the Lincoln Memorial. It's very simple. There's a statue of the man. He happens to be in a Greek temple, but -- and his sayings next to him. And it's so powerful when you reduce this to a minimal statement that we're struggling with where to put these other images and how to do them. I'm hoping they will be centralized in this area, so you don't have to walk around that the garden is the garden. It's a place people can come and experience the garden and use it as a garden, and not hit them over the head with a lot of stuff that they have to look at and read. They can plug into their iPhones or their iPads and sit and contemplate his speeches, hear him making the speeches. So we think the modern techniques overcome the need to pummel people with information. They can get it, they can enjoy it, and they get it perfectly. The -- we're exploring using the stone relief idea for the images of Eisenhower as the president and Eisenhower as the military, which we showed in earlier -- earlier, that one, which is a very strong one. And it's more difficult to make an image of him as the president. We're looking for a better one. There is one with him at the Globe. Do you have that one? No? I guess. I guess you don't. Anyway, he's standing with the Globe of the World, but it seems a little over the top for his personality. So, we like these two images, because they seem to represent him more carefully. So, you see, it's a, it's a struggle to define this as an essence, and to keep the sense of a whole in the park, and to, what other slides do I have? I don't remember. And the, the, finding the way to make this tapestry, and this is just one way, there are examples here being made on the Jaccard loom, the issue is getting the transparency. And when we found a way to do it in a handmade way, that it particularly took it into an, an art form instead of a photograph. And as we work on it, we plan to, to get less and, less photographic. But the transparency of it is what we're counting on to, so that it won't be overwhelming. It'll be part of the park, it'll be transparent, you'll see the buildings behind them, and the image will be there. And so, finally, the modesty will be this young boy and the ref, and whatever the references are to the military and the president, sort of focused in the center in a very modest way, and, and the park and the tapestries will be backgrounds. And I think it'll, the tapestry at night has an interesting persona, and it changes with the light, and we'll be able to, we're planning to work on the lighting of this park so that it can be used for events, to celebrate events in Eisenhower's life. And we've created a terrace, which you can see, where speeches could be given and, and used as a focal point for events in the park. The one more, probably very important issue, is the cartway to the Capitol, and we've made it, this is Einstein Walk at Princeton Institute for Advanced Studies, where I just spent some time. And this is Fuld Hall, and the President's House to Fuld Hall is an alley like this. Now, in our case, these will be further apart, as you can see, and create, but not pave it, make it part of the garden. So, it's from the, from the street side, you look out, you, you get the, the view of the Capitol, very strong, and the changes we made, moving this tapestry, pulling back, widened the opening to the, to the Capitol. So, we listened to the critique of the past meetings, and we feel very comfortable that this addresses those issues. I'm sure we'll have, in the spirit of Eisenhower, we're gonna have, we're gonna listen as much as we can. We know that there are differences of opinion on all of these issues, and as best we can, we're happy to listen to them. Thank you. Craig Webb, my partner, is gonna go through the detail and address the seven, what are they called?
Seven principles.
Seven principles.
Thank you. My name is Craig Webb, I'm a partner with Frank Gehry. So, what I would like to do is firstly, present the difference between the plan that you saw last and the current plan, and then go through an explanation of how we're addressing the seven principles that are key to the planning of, of the memorial. So, the plan on the left side is the, is the plan we presented last time, if I can get the pointer working. So, you see here, the key differences and the changes that we've made in response to the comments that we've had, have to do firstly, with the tapestry itself, the main portion of which has been shortened by one bay. The intent of that is to allow more prominence to the LBJ education building. The second major change is to turn the two flanking tapestry elements from their position parallel to Independence Avenue to being perpendicular to the street. We feel this has accomplished a couple of things. One, it's created more of a welcoming opening into the site itself. It frames and creates a much more coherent public space, and it creates more transparency to the LBJ building itself, because in this design, in portions, you're looking through two layers of tapestry, and in this design, only one layer of tapestry. So, the transparency of the, of that tapestry is really important. Another key aspect is that in the previous design, the Maryland axes was paved, and in the current design, we're proposing a green space in the center of the site. So, the proportion of green and lawn space has greatly increased in the new design. We, there's a much clearer definition of the Maryland axes, with the street trees, which are actually, these trees are in alignment with the street trees on either side of the site, I'm gonna show you an image later on that shows that alignment. And then benches and other architectural elements are gonna define the edges of the historic cartway, the 50-foot width. So, moving, let's see if I can get this to work now. So, this is the previous design, so I'll just reiterate, the main points being the, the shortening of the main tapestry, the turning of these two elements, and the, the creating a green space in the center. So, this is a view of the last design we presented to you, and you can see the, the kind of double-layering effect of the tapestry elements there. This is the new design, and as you can see, this green space in the center, another benefit of this design is that the support building, which had previously been within the memorial precinct itself, now sits outside of the space that's defined by the tapestry, so we feel like that creates a much more appropriate serene space without interruptions of that support building. And this is an image of the current design proposal. You can see the tapestry element framing this public space, the transparency of the, the tapestry itself, which I think in this rendition is actually a little more opaque than the actual, the images of the mock-up of the tapestry, I think, show that there's actually a lot more transparency in the sky element. So, I just wanna go through firstly, the design principles that have focused our design, and then I'll come to the principles, the planning issues. The first, first one I wanna talk about is the, is the prominence of the Maryland Avenue axes, and we feel that, and I think everyone would agree, that this is a fairly ill-defined axes at this point, particularly as it moves further west. We think that the design of the memorial is really gonna strengthen the Maryland axes in an important way, both creating a great public green space, but also helping to frame views and organize the Maryland axes. And so, part of the driver to the reconfiguration of the tapestry is to create a wider opening that frames views of the Capitol, and also to center the Capitol in that view axis. So, previously, the, the view of the Capitol, the columns were framing it in a, in a asymmetrical way, now it's a very symmetrical framed view. And we've spread the columns out, so there's now 92 feet between the columns on either side of that view shed. You can see here, the view from the west side looking toward the Capitol. One of the elements we think is working quite well is that the trees form a very kind of humanistic lower level garden space, the tapestry steps up, framing the space, and then the buildings are the highest elements. So, the tapestry is actually lower than any of the adjacent buildings. It's, it's lower, both than the education building and every single building surrounding the site. It's actually the lowest element on the site. The Maryland Avenue cartway is a very important part of the design, so we feel that creating an open space in the center of the Maryland axes, rather than placing an object in, on that center line, is really important. And we feel like green space is really key to creating a very pleasant garden space. And again, I'll just reiterate, this image from Princeton Institute, the Einstein LA is, shows a more manicured lawn in the center, and then rougher grass and landscape. I'll go into the landscape a bit further, and it, as, as Frank said, the trees in this alley will be spread further apart to really frame views of the Capitol. Just a bit on dimensions, as I said, the, there's the 50-foot cartway, which is the center of the Maryland Avenue axes. These two columns are now 92 feet apart, framing that view. The 50-foot separation from the LBJ building is respected, and none of the memorial elements come into that 50-foot space. The space from the facade of LBJ to the face of the tapestry is 74 feet currently. There's been quite a bit of discussion on the Independence Avenue right-of-way and building lines, I'm gonna go into that in a lot of detail later, but this particular column has been in a lot of discussion. I wanna point out the fact that it sits well outside of the, it sits 16 feet outside of the Independence 110-foot right-of-way, and it is 32 feet from the curb line. It's actually well inside of the, of the, the 20-foot sidewalk that we are proposing along Independence Avenue. Again, this is showing a closer view, the frame view of the Capitol, this kind of stair-stepping from landscape to columns up to building heights. And this also shows a view down the promenade, which is the space that we hope, in cooperation with the Education Department, to really create active uses within that space. I'll talk about that in a minute also. So, in order to create, and I think one of the main values, one of the key principles of design that we've been given, is to create a separate distinct outdoor public space, that would be a gathering space, a, a great garden space, and a space that memorializes President Eisenhower. So, the columns and the tapestry are really key to creating the identity of that space. And you, you can see framed here, this, this, we've studied the, the tree canopy both in the summertime and the wintertime, so this, this is a view in the summertime, which shows what the tree canopy will be like. But I think you can see that this colonnade and tapestry really create the frame for a very organized public space. And the tapestry itself, which is a landscape idea about, which, which we feel epitomizes the values of General Eisenhower, President Eisenhower, his roots, the source of his personal journey, to bring a piece of the center of America into the nation's capital, we think will be a very powerful image. And so, this is, shows how that tapestry will wrap the space. Another key change from the previous design are the, the Fourth and Sixth Street spaces. So, by pulling these tapestry elements in from the curb line of Fourth and Sixth Street, and by, by creating a green zone on either side, we feel like we're creating a better buffer between, between the Wilbur Wright Building on this side and the Coen Building on the other side. It really places the street in the center of the space more than, and so, by pulling these back, we feel like the street spate is, space is really being respected. And I'll show you in a minute how views of the LBJ building are created there. So, you can see the spa, the street spaces created on either side, and then a bit of more compression of the, of the memorial core itself. This would be the Fourth Street vista, so you can see the Coen Building on this side, the corner of LBJ, and then the tapestry. And then on the other side, on Sixth Street, corner of LBJ, the Wilbur Wright Building off to this side. This diagram shows, from these important intersections of, of Sixth Street and Fourth Street, the view shed to the corner of the LBJ building. Also, the greater transparency through to LBJ because of the transparency of the tapestry, as well as views out of the LBJ building through the tapestry. And we've spent quite a bit of time with people from the Department of Education, we've gone up into their spaces with the mock-up placed at the appropriate dimension from the building, and the transparency is actually working quite well based on the mock-up. A little bit about the columns themselves. So, the columns are, their functionality is to support the tapestry, and the tapestry, as you might imagine, needs to be stretched so that it provides a very flat image, which means the tapestry is in a lot of tension, it's, it's set on a cable net. The, the end columns are the ones that are really taking the load, you can see the columns on either side, the, the tapestry is really tensioned between the two of those. And the concrete that is required to support that tension requires a nine-foot in diameter concrete column. The nine-foot in diameter, then, we clad with limestone. We're, we're still exploring different materials, but limestone is the, is the key. And so, you can see the idea of a horizontal banding of the, the individual blocks of limestone, and then the vertical banding like that. So, we have reduced the diameter of the column from 12 feet to 11 feet, which is the minimum dimension that we can bring the cladding in. It allows us one foot on e, either side of the concrete to clad the column. So, 11 feet is about the minimum diameter that we can go to. You can see in this, in this diagram that we have aligned the top of the tapestry with the lowest cornice line on the LBJ building, which helps to associate the tapestry and create a better relationship with that building. And you can see here, that alignment with that lowest step on the LBJ building. In terms of pedestrian circulation on the site, pedestrians will definitely enter from the corners, that's where people will cross the street and coming from adjacent sides, and also from, from the southerly corners. We have created raised landscape on these two corners to direct the pedestrian traffic so that the landscaping doesn't get trampled as people enter the site. And we're bringing people through a paved opening on these two corners, under tapestry elements which act as gateways and, as entry points into the, into the central core of the memorial, and then pathways that allow them to circulate. And as Frank was saying earlier, these memorial elements, we're considering bringing them together more into the center of the site. So, I think as the design develops, we're gonna really start to focus into the central core of the memorial. We intend to move this design along and bring back to this commission, prior to our final submission on October 28th, a more finalized design of the central area. So, we're, we're not quite done yet, but we will bring that design back to you before our final submission. In terms of landscape, one of the main goals of the project is to create a very beautiful public garden, and that has to do with the landscape of the site. So, the predominance of green space here is really key to this, which is why the Maryland axes has been changed into a green walkway. The tree canopy, which will provide shade and create a very pleasant environment under that canopy, with spaces for people to sit and enjoy the landscape, that, that's the kind of a garden space that we're trying to create. The main species of tree is the sycamore tree, which is native both to Kansas, which is the landscape that we're looking both in tapestry and in the landscape design itself, will be the predominant tree, and that's the ones that you see circled in red here. And then, the rest of the tree canopy will be large canopy deciduous trees, mainly different types of oak trees, that will give us a variation so that we don't have just a monolithic culture of trees on the site. The understory will be predominantly turf, so the Maryland axes itself will be the most manicured and most often mowed portion. And then, there are areas around that that will be a little taller grass, but also mowed grass, so most of the site is mowed. These areas that you see in yellow are swales, which are a, a depression in the land, which is, is present in the Kansas landscape. It's where a lot of different plant cultures, because of the water ponds in these areas. So, we're creating those swales on the site, and those will be depressed by 18 inches or two feet, and will, the landscaping in those will be taller grasses and other perennial plants, so that we're getting a variation. It's not just gonna be a big lawn, there's gonna be quite a bit of variation in, in height and scale of plant material. Keeping in mind, visibility on the site is really important for security, there's, there's not gonna be large hedges or anything like that, but the, but a variation in the grasses on there is, is really important. on there is really important. I talked a little bit -- this is the promenade, so here's LBJ. This is the tapestry across this side. One of the key goals in developing the space, which is actually fairly inactive at this point, would be to create different activities. So the center portion, which is a piece that's really shared between the Education Building and the memorial site, has an overlook, so this is three feet above the main memorial site, and there's a kind of wall and overlook there, forms a public gathering space. There's a glass canopy that covers this space, so in inclement weather, it's a very good -- going to be a very good place, both to view the memorial site, but it also gives people a place to meet, and these are the two entries to the LBJ building itself. This space is available for public events and just for kind of gathering and orientation. The space on the left side, we had a design workshop with members of the Department of Education. One idea to be explored here is to create a place for the Department of Education to do community outreach and to present their programming in a very public way in this space. On the other side, their existing café sits there, and the idea of creating outdoor dining along that edge is another idea we're exploring. So we're continuing a dialogue with the Department of Education. We're actually meeting later this afternoon with them. So now I'd like to quickly go through the seven principles that have been given to us and just talk about how we've addressed each of those. The first principle is to create reciprocal views to and from the Capitol. So this is a view from Reservation 113, looking toward the Capitol Building. You can see the kind of stair-stepping of landscape, which in our experience in Washington is that most of the views get framed by trees. They are the predominant element closest to the sidewalk, closest to pedestrians. The tapestry then steps up and centers that view of the Capitol, and then the buildings form the kind of bigger-scale sidewalls to that view. And then looking back, this is really -- this is from one of the upper steps on the Capitol. You can see the viewpoint here. It's pretty amazing to see how green that Maryland axes is currently. I mean, this is a current photograph. And then you can see that the tapestry elements are helping to frame what could become in the future a much enhanced Maryland axes as it goes further to the west. There's a lot of challenges to creating that, but we think that this memorial site can really set up views looking to the west and hopefully encourage what goes on in the future. Second principle is to create a sequence of public spaces. So this is the Eisenhower Memorial Site here, the Capitol off in this direction. Reservation 113, which is a very compromised green public space currently, could become the next in this kind of string of pearls along that axes. I think there's potential here, but it's a huge challenge to get to that. And then the rail line interrupts the view, and that creates an even greater challenge to create the westerly extension of the axes. But we think this is going to be a really important first step to start to focus that activity. The third is to create an integrated site. And so step one is to take out the roadway. And as you can see, the combination of kind of modern traffic planning, which requires left-turn, right-turn lanes, parking, and so on, occupies a huge part of that site. So by taking the roadways out, unifying it as a single parcel, and then creating a green space, goes a long way towards making that kind of space. And here's a view, so once again you see the tapestry framing the space, and the Maryland axes coming through. Again, I'll just reiterate, the idea of the relationship with the surrounding buildings is really important, and so then creating these green spaces on either side in respect to the Wilbur Wright Building and the Cohen Building are important. The image down here shows the Air and Space Museum on this side, and this is just the tapestry columns and tapestry superimposed over the existing site. But I think it shows the way the Air and Space Building really becomes the fourth side of this great public space. Part and parcel with creating the physical part of that is to create the idea of creating a precinct. And the Eisenhower legacy that Carl talked about earlier engages each of the surrounding buildings. And so the idea that the memorial associates President Eisenhower's participation in air and space, the FAA, education, and health and human services, we think that the memorial will really create a neighborhood, a precinct, and draw all those buildings together in a way that they do not currently relate to each other. So in relationship to the Long Font Plan, which is, I think, been -- there's been a huge amount of discussion about exactly what that plan implies and how it functions in this area. The Long Font Plan did not specifically call for a public square at this position, but I think that the events that have taken place with the position of the rail line and so on, I think the opportunity to create one of those spaces on this site presents itself in a way that could happen now and not wait for a long time in the future. So by combining the parcels, we think that this becomes the type of public square that is inherent in the Long Font Plan. And the creation of the space as a temple, as an architectural, you know, space in the city with the green space in the center. So it's not like many of the other Long Font Squares with a statue or a building in the center. It's a framed space that's green space. So we think that's really appropriate and a different type of space that fits well into that plan. I've talked already about the relationship to the LBJ Building. To activate this as a public space is really important in responding to Principle Number Four that we were looking at. In discussions about how we reflect the architecture of the surrounding buildings, each of these buildings has a very separate, distinct architectural character to them. From, you know, modernism and historical building here, the new Museum for American Indians, this is a very diverse set of buildings. Kevin Roach's Air and Space Museum. The idea of using the tapestry as a kind of diaphanous membrane, a very light, translucent piece, we think can really start to create a public square out of this space and really work to relate the buildings one to another. As I said previously, this element, you can see it's lower than each of these buildings, so it gives you views around it. But it also helps to, I think, frame them and create a coherence out of this space. Just to reiterate again, the idea of the stepping from landscape to tapestry to buildings is really important in that linking of those buildings together. This diagram just shows the heights of the adjacent buildings, but as I said before, the 80 feet of -- in height of the tapestry itself is lower than each of these buildings surrounding. I'm not going to go through the heights, but this diagram shows that. I'd like to now talk about the principle of building lines and view sheds, which is really critical to the planning of the nation's Capitol. Firstly, I've already talked about dimensions here, and I want to get into a little more detail on that. So the 92 feet of the view shed of the Maryland Avenue axes, we think, is really important. The width of the cartway and the framing of those views is important. This diagram shows the relationship of the street -- of the trees on either side of the Maryland axes in relationship to the street trees on either side. So there's a definite alignment and continuity of landscape elements which will really strengthen the Maryland axes. In terms of the Independence street wall, or I would say, lack of street wall, I'd like to just talk a little bit about what goes on. And this shows the full length of Independence within the neighborhood, starting with the Agriculture Department, which actually has bridges that cross the street and frame a very interesting kind of plaza space in the center there, but also create kind of a portal coming into this part of the street heading toward the Capitol. And then you can see the buildings step back and forth pretty radically. A lot of the older buildings are the closest to the sidewalk. If I can get this to change. So here's the Agriculture Department. These older, more historical buildings, this one is actually 16 feet from the curb line, so they really crowd in. And you can see the street wall moves back and forth. Some of the more modernist buildings step quite a distance back from the curb line. The Hirshhorn is a -- becomes an object in itself with no street wall, but becomes a kind of spatial definer there, and so on, and so on. So the issue of what happens in terms of street wall in this site, this one column is not radically different from a lot of the back-and-forth stepping that happens as you move down Independence Avenue. This just shows further down near the Capitol. So again, I just want to reiterate that this column is outside of the legally-defined Independence Avenue right-of-way, and also well back from both the curb line and from the edge of the sidewalk, sitting in the gardened green space of the site. The final principle that we think we've paid very close attention to would be to create a public green space. I've talked a lot about that. So just to reiterate, this we see as a very important public garden in Washington, D.C. So I would like to conclude by saying that we believe we've listened and that we've really complied with the principles that have been put before us. We will come back to you very shortly with a final design for the center of the memorial core.
I just wanted to make one observation. In the model photographs, the opening to the Maryland cartway is exaggerated vertically, and so I urge you to come and look at it on the model, because it's wider in actual perception when you look at it on the model.
Thank you, Mr. Gary, Mr. Webb. Very good presentation. We appreciate you walking us through how the design has progressed since we last gathered in February. At this point, there may be some questions among commission members, so let me turn it inward. Mr. Gunning?
Thank you. I have a lot of comments, so I'll just kind of go through it. First, let me say, you know, I got a chance a month ago, I guess, to be with my fellow commissioners to see the prototypes of the tapestry and how that was kind of being developed. And I honestly thought it was dazzling. I mean, I thought it was just beautiful. And, you know, Mr. Gary, I know that is something that you're really known for, your innovation in materials, and I thought that was -- it was incredibly beautiful and really a wonderful innovation. I really loved it. Okay, that being said, the problem with Southwest is that it's -- it has an overbearing scale and that this, you know, and a lot of what this commission is trying to do with some of its efforts with the Southwest Eco-District and some of the other plans is to actually try to humanize that scale. And I think that this is exacerbating rather than contributing to that humanization. Yes, the screens are diaphanous, the columns are still really gargantuan. You know, and the whole design is supersized. And the relationship with the Long Font Streets, a normal, you know, Long Font Street is a 90-foot width. This avenue is 160 feet. And the avenues are intended to create these wonderful views. So in some ways, we are kind of making the view of the Capitol a much more ordinary, and I use the term maybe not so well, pedestrian, because I want to get back to pedestrians. But, you know, we make the -- we make that view so much more ordinary than I think it needs to be. I think that our historic preservation officers talked a little bit, maybe to some of your folks, about some specific suggestions in terms of that spacing. You successfully went from an 80-foot column spaced 92 feet apart. You know, I think what I'd love to see is a 70-foot column spaced 105 feet apart. That would give you a one and a half to one ratio. Right now, we have essentially in this area 80-foot buildings and 160-foot right-of-way, which is a two-to-one ratio, which is, I think, more -- something that would be more appropriate here. In terms of scale, I'll just point out that the lower blocks of the Air and Space Museum are 68 feet, the columns at the Cohen Building are 71 feet. So getting from 80 to 70, I think, would actually help with the scale of this memorial. Let me see, what else did I want to say? That I think it's very impressive to see the models. I think they're wonderful. But the comment that the commission members have made, I think repeatedly, is that we'd love to see, even in the photographs, more of the perspective of the park user. If you're in the park, how does the scale feel to you? What are the facilities for you, the user of the park? I mean, I think this is like, you know, every view that we see gives you a perspective that you'll never have of this memorial. You'll very rarely have it, because, you know, you can't get from this perspective. The space-making, the placemaking is actually in the side of the memorial itself, and it'd be wonderful to see some perspectives of what that is like. And as much as I think the screens and the materials you're using are so beautiful, I do know that from 20 feet up, I'm losing a lot of the detail. I'm not getting the craftsmanship, the incredible, the miracle of this thing that you've produced, because it starts 20 feet in the air and then goes up, you know, 60 feet. And it's hard to kind of get those details. So, you know, one of the things I particularly want to see is the -- is what is it from the, you know, user's perspective? You know, the pedestrians look dwarfed in that space in this model for a good reason, I think. So just to get a sense of what are you doing for the people who are going to be in the memorial? Where are they sitting? You know, what is their experience of being in the space that you're creating? You mentioned the cafeteria. I'll just make a point about that. GSA is here, and they're doing some really marvelous things that the commission, I know, is very supportive of, making more of the federal facilities accessible to the public. And have plans to do that with their own cafeteria in their remodeled headquarters. I would hope that if the Department of Education is going to be talking about using part of this design to activate the public space, that they would also consider making that cafeteria accessible to the public. And those other places in the monumental part of the city where there is a, like the Sculpture Garden, where there is a place where you can eat and have a very convivial meal, it is very much an enlivening asset. If it's something you can only press your nose to the glass and see other people eating and having refreshments, but because you don't have a federal ID, you can't do that, not so enlivening, really. I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gunning. Mr. May, did you have?
I just had general comments. I mean, I've obviously been very close to the process of development of the memorial. And I just want to emphasize for the benefit of the commission how difficult the design challenge is working on this particular site. I mean, it is just a hugely complicated thing. It's not a well-defined space. It has all these roads running through it. It's so wide open, and trying to make some definition of it, I think, is just such a huge challenge. And I appreciate all the work that has gone into designing the memorial to address things both on a large scale but on a small scale as well. I would also say that since we saw this last, there has been a, I think, a substantial change that has resulted from a series of smaller changes. I mean, the loss of one column, the turning of the two tapestry panels, and so on. And I don't know that that necessarily comes through in the presentation, but I think the net effect is that the memorial design and the features of it, I think, fit much more comfortably and address the design guidelines, I think, for the most part, very effectively. I also would agree that the really big move, the dazzling aspect of this, is the development of the tapestry. And I was fairly concerned, I think, from the very beginning about how effective that would be and how much that could change the nature of this design or sort of prove the design. But I think that what we've seen in the samples that are here and the samples that we saw on-site prove that the tapestry is prove that the tapestry is, is a potentially a very, very exciting feature and demonstrates an artistry and appropriateness for the, for what's being attempted here that I actually find quite surprising and delightful. So I think that was a really big development since we were here last. The, the result is, I think, that there has been exceptional progress over the last several months. I do know there is more work that needs to be done. There's more work to be done from the Park Services perspective, because as much as I love the tapestry, we want to make sure that it's maintainable and permanent in the long run. We have to, we go to great lengths to maintain our memorials and have to withstand many different conditions. Some of them are surprising, like earthquakes. Fortunately, this, I don't think, is going to have issues if there's another earthquake. But we have responsibility for maintaining everything more or less forever. And so we want to make sure that it passes the forever test. So we will continue to work with the design team to make sure that that happens. With regard to the further development of the design, I think that's, that's all happening. And I'm confident that we will get to a completion point that will be satisfactory for this commission and for the other commissions and for Section 106 consulting parties and so on. So, thanks.
Another discussion, Mr. Hart?
I also was able to view the mockups of this, this tapestry last month. And I was struck with the progression of a notion from a photographic representation to something that's a lot more sculptural and true artwork in its own. That being said, from the very beginning, I've expressed a concern about putting anything of this scale in the street right-of-way. And there are four of these enormous columns in the Maryland Avenue right-of-way that I think begin to obstruct that. It narrows the right-of-way from a hundred and sixty feet of clear view to ninety feet. And I find that disturbing, much in the way that Commissioner Gunning described in making the street less monumental. I do appreciate the fact that, that view shed is being framed by trees that continue the LA along the Maryland Avenue axis, opening up towards the Capitol. And I think that the addition and emphasis of a garden treatment of the plaza is going to be a welcome addition. I'm still looking, though, for the connection to Eisenhower. I'm not seeing the celebration of the man and his contribution in depiction of a rural landscape, which is really, you know, very much the central theme on the tapestry. And I, the last point is that I see that the support building is being moved out of the Central Plaza. And I applaud that. As a matter of fact, I would take it off the table entirely if it was in my power. I don't think it's appropriate or a positive addition to this, this design concept. So if GSA were willing to help, you know, accommodate some of those functions, I think that would be much appreciated. Thank you.
Mr. Provencha?
With the approval of the chairman, is the Department of Education representatives that are here today, would they be allowed to share their perspectives?
I don't see why not.
I think that the partnership, the communication, the collaboration between the Eisenhower Commission and their neighbors
Yes, sir.
would, would be relevant.
Is anyone here from Dealey?
Ms. Weiss, Mr. McGrath? Not here today? Okay.
My name is Dan File. I'm executive architect with the Eisenhower Memorial Commission. Mr. Gary and my commission have a meeting with Joanne Weiss, the chief of staff, Secretary Duncan, at two o'clock, if we have concluded then, if not, a few minutes later, here in your training room. So we are talking with them, and I think that we're getting to a better place. We'll see.
Did a group recently go from the NCMAC to meet with the education folks? I chatted with Mr. McGrath earlier, and the way he's the Assistant Secretary for Community, basically, Public Affairs. Was there a separate meeting?
There was a, Chief, Ms. Weiss went down and viewed the same mockups that you did. She also went inside and viewed them from inside the building out, as I believe you folks did. My commission met with her deputy, Eric Waldo, I think about a week ago, with John McGrath. And that's when we all agreed that the two of them, plus Joanne, would be coming to see the model. They've not seen the model before. They've seen the mockups. And it seems that we're, as I say, I think we're moving in a good direction.
In their absence, if I might be permitted, I could share the gist of Mr. McGrath's conversation with me of Tuesday of this week. They considered, continue to be concerned about the relationship between the building and the memorial. The promenade has some concerns, the tapestry, the sightlines, the view from outside the building, the lighting into the building. He used the term "shrouding" the building, was the, again, his terminology. He did acknowledge that some of the issues had been mitigated. He talked about the shortened span of the tapestry. The images that they have now seen in the mockups are, were more translucent than they originally had, had been led to believe. The reorientation of the smaller tapestries was also notable. It was very helpful for them to see, as it was for the commissioners, to make the site visit and look at the mockups. See, distance between the tapestry and the building, the height. They became, though, more comfortable, I'm just, this is my notes as our conversation proceeded. He described the rank and file in the education building as not being crazy about the columns. However, their leadership, the message that they have taken away is that this is inevitable. You need to get on board. They seem to believe that the commissioners on both the NCMAC and NCPC are pleased with the design. They were pleased with things like the support for visitors. They were led to believe that their building and their plaza was, was not remarkable. And part of the function of the tapestry was to hide, quote, "an ugly building." Obviously, that's in the eye of the beholder. Sometimes clear and clean and simple and functional is also attractive. They were respectful of the intent to design the plaza as a theater. One of the things that they, was important to them, was respect, while they acknowledged that they're a tenant in the building, they're also a cabinet agency, and they have a very important mission. So that was the gist of his comments to me. The specific ones that I have, I echo and support the comments.
Could I please address some of those comments?
Certainly.
When we met with Mr. McGrath and on previous occasions, he told us that somewhere between less than twenty people sent him emails regarding their comments on the tapestry and how they felt about the project. There are a thousand people in the building. It didn't seem in any way conclusive that the twenty emails were representative of everyone. We've asked where it all comes from, and it's all anecdotal. When, so I'll offer my anecdote. My commission receives five or six emails on our website from people who are at the Department of Ed. And some of them were rather vocal and unkind and unpleasantly worded. One, after the tapestry went up, the very next morning, the same woman called, wrote us another email and apologized and said, "I'm very sorry. I spoke the way I did. My language was off. The tone was wrong, and it's going to be beautiful. Thank you." When we were up on the floor, looking out on the tapestry, a worker right in front of the glass said, "I want to meet the architect. I just think it's great. I can see it. It's a tree. I can see through it." So there are anecdotes on both sides, but it's, I don't, we didn't get, we weren't told from Mr., by Mr. Waldo or by Ms. Weiss that they felt this was inevitable. It seemed to be more moving in the direction of, "It is acceptable to us now, and we would like to develop the promenade so that we can really get something out of this, more than even the space itself. We want to activate it." And that's why I asked her to come and see the model, and she agreed, because I think you really too understand it. As Frank said before, you need to get up and walk around it and look at it. So we're thrilled that she's coming, and we're very optimistic that we will wind up in a better place. And hopefully, if they feel that way, the department will be able to commit to you formally what their position is rather than this anecdotal.
I asked them about that, because their formal position was, February this year, multiple concerns signed out per the memo of Mr. Duncan. I asked Mr. McGrath specifically about that, subsequent to your meetings. And I perhaps have laid out the agenda for your meetings afternoon, if they're consistent with the concerns that were raised. But I asked him specifically, will there be a follow-on memo with your latest and newest position? And he could not, obviously, on behalf of the secretary, make that commitment, but it's, but it's being considered. Appreciate your, your response on the anecdotal information. Again, my source was Mr. McGrath of forty-eight hours ago. One of the things that he was concerned about, somehow or another, he's gotten the impression on the imaging that's being selected or proposed and considered at this time for the tapestry. With this thing being twenty feet above the ground, what it does because of the broad width of the most dense and therefore most opaque band of the earthwork is the folks on the second and third floor, their view out of the building and the light into the building is blocked. One of the suggestions is just to shift the camera angle up a couple of inches so that that band is just a little bit narrower. Going back to the issue of the tapestry, I think it's an incredible, I'm surprised it hasn't been patented already. It is so innovative. But like some fellow commissioners, again, from the operations and maintenance and life cycle perspective, the ability of the, those thousands and thousands
Millions.
millions of welds and their ability to withstand buffeting of winds. I believe there's some weathering testing underway. So hope that would make sure that the, those wells, short of sealing them with, and then also cleaning, wind-borne debris, airborne seeds, bird nests. It would be difficult if you have to hose this thing down either from a crane or some built-in spray jets every night. That would be unfortunate. I think the last point I'd like to cover is just the design principles. Acknowledge that we have seen progress from February to today. The seven design principles, there was only compliance for this particular design concept, three, that in February met the least amount of those design principles, only two of seven. There has been progress to date. The two that were met, enhancing the nature of the site, number two, and incorporating green space, have been sustained. So that's a good thing. There was no, as we say in North Carolina, where I'm from, no backsliding, which is, is good. There's at least partial compliance with number three on the uniformed memorial site. There's at least partial compliance on shaping the site, number four. Little bit of hesitancy still about complimenting the Department of Education headquarters. Hopefully, subsequent to your meeting, we'll have good news there. Still have major concerns about five and six respecting, complimenting the architecture of the surrounding precinct and the sightlines that have been touched on by the other, other commissioners. So applaud you for the efforts headed in the right direction. Some of the concerns remain about scope, scale, view sheds, both down capital and reciprocal. Or still continue to have those. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. McGill?
Thank you. First of all, in response to Mr. Gunning, in the summer of 2001, we put tables and chairs outside the education building so that passersby could partake of the food and drink in the cafeteria and enjoy the plaza, if it's possible to enjoy that plaza. After 911, those tables and chairs were removed. We certainly share your concern about the importance and need for making our buildings more open and accessible and making people, giving people access to our food services. So that's very important. Second, I'd like to just make a few comments on the design. I'm very impressed with the changes and modifications that have been made. I'm especially impressed with this idea of the outdoor room. And now it's more so of an outdoor room because of the rotating of the end panels. And it seems to me that the outdoor room might be the only way to relate to some of these design principles. Now, I empathize with the architect having to try to respect the law and font plan when almost all the buildings on Maryland Avenue don't respect the law and font plan. They are situated so that they are parallel to Independence Avenue. And they have, and they're rectangles, not, not multi-shaped shapes like in the federal triangle. And as a result, you get this zigzag, gap-toothed facade along Maryland Avenue that is a constant source of dismay to me from a design, from design principles, from the sense of creating a street wall. Secondly, respecting the architecture of the existing buildings surrounding the site is very difficult, because the architecture of the existing buildings surrounding the site varies so dramatically. And so it seems to me that the outdoor room is one of the few ways those design principles can be complied with. And although this is on a much smaller scale, I can think of an example where this has worked. In New Harmony, Indiana, which is a historic community built in the 1810s and 1820s on the banks of the Wabash River, I believe, or the White River. The, the village was a utopian community founded by German separatists. And it's mainly wood vernacular architecture. And in the middle of this restored, preserved historic site is a roofless church designed by Philip Johnson with four walls and no roof, four low walls and landscaping. And it does a very effective job of fitting into the site, yet providing a different contrast to what's there right now. I'm also pleased that the cartway has been shifted from paving to grass. I think that's more respectful of the memorial itself. It integrates the memorial together better while still keeping the sightlines intact. And I like the, the subject matter of the tapestry. Eisenhower was a man of the West. He lived beyond the Hundredth Meridian in a fairly severe environment. Yet, and he had the optimism and openness of people of the West. Yet he also worked to integrate the East and the West with the interstate highway system. So I think that this is a very appropriate memorial as designed. And I'm impressed with the way they've modified it to comply with these principles. Thank you.
Thank you. Any last words? Yes, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to thank all of those who have worked in this noble endeavor. Seeing all of the Ike buttons brings back many fond memories. I have one of those in my office prominently displayed. And it did occur to me, when you mentioned the time involved, and it exceeds the length of America's involvement in World War II, and almost combined with Eisenhower's eight years as president. I'd like to ask, I'm very intrigued by the design, and I think it's, it's really inspiring. But there are a few aspects I'd like to inquire about. Number one, I personally would be satisfied with just the statue of Eisenhower with different notations on the base noting his, the positions that he held, the President and General, and Presidency of Columbia University, and the head of NATO, and so on. I was just wondering if any thought was given to that or, and specifically Columbia University and NATO, is there any reference to that or symbolism involved in any of the, any of the items displayed here?
Well, as I stated, we're working with the historians and the experts. I've read everything I could find about him. And he kept referring to Abilene, so, and the Barefoot Boy. And we thought that was, that was a moment- And we thought that was, that was a moment, I think when we talked about it, David Eisenhower burst into tears actually, as I recall. The, I think the, we don't want to dismiss all those other things. A statue of Eisenhower may just be obvious at this point. I don't know, we're looking into it. The hardest thing is to find a sculptor that, all the great ones are sort of gone. We're getting help from a contemporary artist, Charlie Ray, who is, when I asked him if he would do it, he said, no, he's saving himself for MacArthur. That was his quick response to get himself out of it. But he said, I'll show you how to do it. So we're working on that and I don't rule out a statue of Eisenhower. We've got only a few weeks to decide this, so we're pushing, pushing forward.
Yeah, I just wanted to associate myself with the remarks of Ms. Gunning and others about the tapestry. I was, I too was on site and it is beautiful, but I also associate myself with her other remarks about the columns in particular. I think when I first saw them here, I called them the biggest, baddest bollards around and they look, they are colossal, gargantuan things. If there's a way, I think the mock-up had a steel, had some kind of a steel frame, which obviously doesn't complement the architecture of the surrounding building, but I think it worked better in terms of, it can be thinner, it can be more, it just doesn't, it can perform the function that you need these things to perform, I would think. They're just so, they're so big.
Just to point a clarification on the frame. The frame is there simply for the mock-up.
Right.
There will be no frame like that on the tapestry itself. The tapestry will be the.
No, I realize that. I was, and I was trying to say that I kind of liked it better than the 10 huge columns. I mean, from the perspective I have right here, it's not so bad, but most people are going to have, a lot of people are going to have the, the columns right on, right on their, looking at them and they're just so many and so big.
Okay. Thank you. Last comments, please.
Just very quickly, I just wanted to point out that the, you know, it's both the dimension of the column's diameter, but it's also height. And I really would like to see, the other two initial proposals were at 50 and 65 feet for the initial design, so 80 feet, just, you know, what it does to the right-of-way. And I will also say, I get that the Independence Avenue is uneven, but, but I'm not wild about the columns intruding into the Independence Avenue right-of-way, so visibly, it's a visible intrusion is what I object to. I realize that the, you know, Mr. Gary talked about the Lincoln Memorial and the Greek temple idea and the rigorous geometry of that. For what it's worth, I would be perfectly happy to see that relaxed and to, and to be able to move things around a little bit, move those side tapestries so that you didn't have the rigorous geometry, but you also didn't have things intruding, so you got more space between the columns, you could have more of that Monumental Boulevard and not so much intrusion, you know, when you look down the street and what you see is not the beautiful tapestry, you see this massive, out-of-scale column. And one last thing, I love the idea of the outdoor room, except this is not an outdoor room, this is like an outdoor airport, that it's, it's just, I would love to have these beautiful panels create some intimacy and, and there are so many different parts of the life of Eisenhower. Mr. Gary spoke about the Roosevelt Memorial where maybe it's too many series of vignettes, but every one of those spaces is intimate and different. And, and I don't know, you feel like you know the man and you know the woman and you know the life in a way that, that I'm just not getting from this memorial and it really has to do with scale and intimacy and what you experience at the ground. I think the changes have been in the right direction. I'd like to see more of them and like I said, I'd like to see the intimate spaces for people that you'll be creating, you know, on the ground of this memorial.
Well, regarding the height, the 50-foot and the 65-foot columns were proposed for two other alternatives and they were enclosing different sizes of area and volume. So it's not necessarily reasonable to immediately say, well, you used 60 or 65 in that, why can't you stick it over there? It's very difficult for the client group, my commission, to have our design team come forward to the different review bodies in Washington and get told somewhat disparate things. And we have to work with that and we will. There are studies that, on column height, that were done and we're trying to schedule meetings with NCPC staff to go over them, to show how we arrived where we are. And we'll be doing that in the, before we come back to you. We hope to do that in the next two weeks. And the intimacy, again, will be coming back with the ground plane and hopefully when you see where we are with the ground plane, that you'll feel more comfortable with the scale issue. We'll see.
Mr. Gary, Mr. Webb, Mr. File, thank you very much. As we wrap up, I want to make just a couple of points. One is, a number of folks have commented about the progress that's been made. I think that's been the result of a lot of collaboration. The 106 process is working and the comments made today about columns and rights-of-ways and such will continue in that forum and I'm sure will be, there will be consensus. Second, at least speaking for myself, I've seen more information today on the ground plane and some substantive details than I think I've seen before and you just, Mr. File just mentioned that there's more information coming on that. If we could get that information so that we could look at it as quickly as possible, that would be helpful. And then last, I would say, just regarding some of these outstanding issues, I think it's important that the 106 process move along fairly expeditiously so that we can then get, jump immediately into the NEPA process and be ready for December. I think that's very important. So with that, thank you very much for coming. It's been a very good session and I hope you've gotten some constructive comments back. We will have to take about a five-minute break right now because this model has to be moved because it has other obligations this afternoon. And so if we can.
Mr. Chairman, can I interrupt for one second? I just want to remind folks who have the interest in commenting on the, on the design, the environmental assessment, comment period is happening right now and so you can go to our website and find the place to comment.
Very good.
And the deadline for that, I think, is the 19th.
Thank you, Mr. May. So let's take about a five-minute break and if we can move this model as quickly as possible, that'd be very helpful. If we could re-resume proceedings. We could get staff back. Next item on the agenda is item number 6A. It's the first-stage planned unit development and related map amendment for the Southwest Waterfront project. And we have Mr. Hart here to kick off the discussion. Mr. Hart, welcome.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. Before you today is the first-stage planned unit development and related map amendment for the Southwest Waterfront in southwest Washington, DC. This project is an important one because of the location of the Southwest Waterfront and the connection that the, that we want to create along the 10th Street corridor from the mall to the Southwest Waterfront as part of the Monumental Core Framework Plan and as part of the Southwest Eco-District process that's currently ongoing. Because of its importance, staff has talked, has consulted with the developer, with the project and have really focused on a couple of issues, those of views from the Banneker Overlook and connections to and from the waterfront from the Banneker Overlook. And those consultations have progressed well and I'll be presenting the results of that in this presentation. Just to kind of orient everyone, the Southwest Waterfront is here, the PUD is outlined in yellow in the center of the slide. The 10th Street corridor is highlighted here at, and connects to the Southwest Waterfront at Banneker Park and the Overlook, which is again, a prominent location. Also wanted to point out a couple of pieces, a couple of other elements on the, on the map. There is the, several National Park Service properties are in the area, including the Banneker Park, the Main Lobsterman Park. Wanted to note that Main Lobsterman Park, you may notice it, it's actually this little dot that's here. It's surrounded by the PUD, but it's not included in the PUD. We also have the Titanic Memorial and I also wanted to note that the Main Avenue Fish Market is not included in the, in the PUD itself, but wanted to note where it was in the draw. Previous commission action, the commission acted on a street closure for Water Street, which is actually located, this is the yellow line that's here, it's located within the boundary of the PUD that's before you. And at that time, using the Southwest Waterfront, sorry, excuse me, Southwest Eco-District discussions that have been going on, the two main points that the commission recommended was to improve views and strengthen the connections, again, strengthening, and strengthening connections was from Banneker down to the waterfront itself. And staff has actually been working with the applicant, as I said earlier, to, to work on those, those two aspects. Now, the first-stage PUD, this is the illustrative plan for the, for the project. Excuse me. This image is rotated slightly. 10th Street is located here to the left of the slide as well as the Banneker Park and Overlook. And the north in this case is actually kind of diagonal on the side, so this is north to the, to the left. First-stage PUDs really look at building massing, they're really illustrative in nature. They look at building massing, they look at the types of uses that are being proposed as well as some of the other elements that would go on with this particular project. There will be a second-stage PUD that the developer will submit for the project as well. I wanted to note that the project itself is, as I said, a first-stage PUD. There is also a zoning change that's being proposed as well. The zoning is to allow the development to be under actually C3C and R5B. These would allow heights of 130 feet and 60 feet to the, 130 feet along Main Avenue, so these buildings, and then lower dent, lower height buildings down here. The second-stage PUD, yes?
I'm not sure if we've asked this question before, but what, I mean, noting the proximity of the buildings to the waterfront, what consideration has been given to climate change and presumed sea level rise over time?
The developer is, actually their representatives are here and I think they can talk about that in a little more detail later. This is development that they have looked at sustainability as part of that, they're actually looking for lead gold for the, for the project. And it's, I believe that it's actually in a, it's not on the flood plain, so that there is, they can, they can describe the project more detail and give you that information that you're, that you're looking for.
There are quite a number of tidal and coastal communities who are looking at long-range plans on, on buildings very close to tidal waters, so.
This is the, the second and, first, second and third phases, actually, this is a phase development. They're looking at, excuse me, these phases coming, coming forward in the future. The second-stage PUD will look at the project in more detail and give greater detail on architecture, building architecture, the exact mix of uses as well as other site elements. And just to note, this is the, if you didn't see, the Main Lobsterman Park that's located here. The development in massing and summering, they're looking at site area of a little less than a million square feet. Building area is 3.165 million gross square feet and that would lead to an FAR of 3.19. There are 2,100 to 2,600 parking spaces, all below ground in the development as well as bicycle parking and bicycle storage for between 1,500 and 2,200 bicycles. And finally, building heights again from 57 and, between 57 and 130 feet. Would like to note that along Main Avenue, Main Avenue is 120-foot right-of-way and this would allow under the Hyde Act, buildings to the 130-foot height. The proposed open space plan, showing this because the developer has proposed a wharf and this is, I guess, the wharf. And that is the main organizing factor for the, for the development. It helps to link all of the streets as well as open spaces to one main element. And the, if you'll note that the streets, as they come into the development, the streets are actually carried through and connect to the streets, 9th Street, 7th Street, and then M Street coming along here. They actually either end in a plaza or a park at each of these locations, so it's really bringing the urban fabric into the, the development itself. The developer has submitted some sketches along with the, the plan. These are just some images of what their ideas are for the, for the development, looking at street view along Main Avenue, the rooftop view here looking towards the west, and then two park views here, looking, one towards East Potomac Park and another looking at the Proposed, proposed transportation plans, we have the streetcar circulation plan as well as the bicycle amenities plan. These were submitted by the developer. And for the streetcar circulation plan, there are two streetcar lines that are, that will be used to circulate into and around the development. The developer has not included overhead streetcar line, streetcar wires as part of the, the images that they supplied to us. And future elements or future details will be worked out through the second-stage PUD and be submitted to us through the second-stage PUD process. For the bicycle amenities plan, the developer is showing that there are connections to the trails, bike trails, as well as other bicycle facilities like capital, capital share, bike. stations, and then the perosity of the site for bicyclists into and down to the wharf. Staff analysis, we were really looking at, understanding the, that there are current planning processes that are going on with the southwest waterfront, southwest eco-district process. That was part of the Monumental Core Framework Plan. And the main issues that were really discussed during the plan were that of views and also understanding the physical connection to and from Banneker. In addition, there's, because of the location of NPS properties, there needs to be further NPS coordination as well. The views, here is, are two images that are showing a plan that we saw, that staff saw back in November of 2010, and what the current plan is showing. In 2010, the, this is the 10th Street overlook again, and this would be the main connection down to, a physical connection down to the waterfront. It was, it was showing a 50 to 70-foot kind of view shed down there, and the issue that we were trying to deal with was trying to widen that to allow more views, greater view to the water. And the developer has actually rotated buildings and redesigned buildings to allow for a wider view shed. And what we have now is a 100-foot wide space. This is actually called the Market Square Plaza. And this is the image that the developer has submitted to us. The development is shown here in the left part of the slide. Market Square Plaza is here with a one-story building. And also shown here is the Main Avenue Fish Market. It's not part of the development, but they were just showing what that, what that might look like. Now, we have the blocked, the views looking from the, this is the, actually, the access along 10th Street. And again, looking at the 2010 plan and the current plan, this building that was here is actually sitting on, and all the buildings are really sitting on, a two-to-five-story base. And in this case, this building had two residential towers that came from that base, and those towers blocked the view along the 10th Street access. In this instance, we see that there is an 80-foot-wide view corridor now because of the redesign of these, or actually, reorientation of these buildings along that axis. I would note that this is a section actually through this, that building that you just saw. Again, a five-floor base for the building would, is, the line of, the height of which is, would be here. This image to the left, the drawing, the section actually shows to the left the Banneker overlook. You'll note that this is actually higher, the line is higher than where the overlook is. And the views out from the, from this side would actually be, really from an elevated stance, and the Monumental Core Framework Plan had, at the end of the 10th Street terminus, a plan for a memorial or museum at that location. So from that, there would be a view, but not from the actual 10th Street overlook. This is just showing images that the developer supplied regarding sections through the wharf and through Main Avenue, and they're, they did not include the streetcar lines. This is just showing the connection, physical connection, as part of the land development agreement between the city and, excuse me, the district and the developer, they are required to develop a connection between the overlook and the development itself. And NCPC and NPS and the developer will be beginning a process to design this. This is just a, an idea of what that might look like. And that process will begin to design this connection in the beginning part of 2012. National Park Service coordination, again, because of the proximity of a number of National Park Service properties, there needs to be further coordination between the developer and the National Park Service to make sure that there's maintaining access and, maintaining access to these sites. And with that, the executive director recommends that the commission comment favorably on the southwest waterfront first stage planning unit development, which identifies building massing, land uses, open space development, waterfront development and improvements, as well as a related map amendment to allow it to be developed under the C3C, W1 and R5B zoning districts. Notes that since the Water Street closure was approved by the commission in 2010, the District of Columbia and the developer have been working with NCPC staff on strengthening physical and visual connections to the overlook, with the developer committing to increasing the width of the market street, Market Square to 100 feet, proposing an 80-foot-wide opening between the residential towers, and constructing a pedestrian connection from Banneker overlook to Main Avenue. And just note that overhead wires for the future streetcard lines are not being proposed along this portion of Main Avenue or along the wharf, and encourages the developer to meet with the National Park Service regarding strengthening connections to all of the National Park Service properties that are nearby this project. And with that, I'd conclude my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. Questions or comments? Mr. McGill, then Mr. Hart?
A couple of questions. One, I've thought from past presentations that the future of the Banneker overlook site was up in the air, that the city would like to maybe build a garage underneath it. The commission has talked about putting a museum on top of it. And you are working from an assumption that it's a grassy knoll with two stairways leading down to the ground, and then using that as a judgment for protecting view sheds and so on. What, what is the status of the future of Banneker overlook?
Well, I think that there's, there's been quite a bit of discussion, and I think that there needs to be quite a bit of more discussion about what the future is. I think for right now, we're looking at it as it currently is, in that a connection would be really some sort of stair that goes down to the, to the waterfront. And as part of the southwest water, southwest eco-district process, they're looking at what happens with the, that connection and that terminus as well. So I think there's kind of more, more planning that needs to go on before we get to a, this is what's going to happen, and this is the timetable for it.
But so you're asking the developer to change their plan?
Can I, can I speak to this? Because I think I can enlighten on this subject a little bit. I think that when the developers started out, they, they were looking at the framework plan and, and other resources to try to anticipate what would happen in the future in Banneker, planning for the future. And I think the, as a result, there were certain assumptions about the density of what would happen there. And I think frankly, the assumption about density overestimated what the density would be. You know, the Park Service, which controls the site completely, anticipates it would eventually be used for a museum or a memorial site or some combination thereof, and it may include a parking garage for buses and, or whatever purpose. But we did not anticipate that the building would be built out to the full FAR of a office-type development, and I think that's kind of what was pictured initially.
You mean, the building down below?
No, no, no. That the Banneker would be built out, you know, you just take a, you know, the maximum footprint and extrude it up to the maximum height, and that's, and then you have very narrowly defined view corridors. We didn't see that happening in the future at any point. We always thought that if it was going to be a significant build-out with a museum, that it would still be a, an object in a landscape as opposed to a downtown office building kind of setting. So there's still going to be, we think, in the future, some outdoor amenity associated with that overlook site, whether it's associated with a memorial or a museum, or even if it is associated with other development, there's going to be some place there, and there's going to need to be a connection to it. Now, how do you design based on that? I mean, it's, it's not enough to form things, I think, too specifically, the way they have tried to adapt the design to the arena stage and shape the plaza that's opposite the arena stage. Here, it's a, it's a lot more speculative, but I think that they have stepped up and tried to pick what were the important view corridors and put some focus on those, so that there are these visual connections from Banneker overlook to East Potomac Park and the water beyond. So it's, it's, it's been a difficult balance, but I think that they've moved in the right direction. And plus, we don't know when anything is going to happen there. It could be, you know, 20 or 30 years in the future, so it doesn't make a lot of sense to just ignore it.
Okay. So then, carrying this a little further, marching down the development, you've got other view sheds that are potentially valuable and important and, and are preceding this development. So you've got the arena stage with a spectacular new addition and balconies overlooking the water. And then you've got all those thousands of condominium units in the southwest redevelopment area. Now, I thought I heard somewhere that there were going to be medium-rise buildings built on piers sticking out into the water that would block the views of most of those residences in the southwest redevelopment area. And so I'm just curious, has the staff looked at other view sheds worthy of being protected or respected?
Can I jump in? I mean, I have a harsh answer, Mike, but I won't, I won't use that answer. The, the developer has been, and the architects have been very thoughtful, I think, about designing taller, narrower buildings so that, you know, the things that, that we really want to protect as a commission is more the public spaces and the public views and the public rights of way. So we have a termination at the end of every street that now can come down to the waterfront, you know, out a pier into a plaza with views of the water. You know, basically, this land, you know, there's not a property right that private property holders have to be able to look at views, you know, on the site. You know, we, I think the, the team did a great job accommodating arena stage, but arena stage actually could have been on the water, and that was one suggestion, and there wouldn't be an issue about protecting views of the water. But in deciding to be in a different location, you don't get to build your property somewhere else and get, and get the views you didn't buy, right? So that's maybe a little harsher than I meant to be, but, yes. But the public spaces is what we're kind of concerned about as a commission, and I think they've done a really great job protecting that. And I, and I think the point that, that Peter made, which is, it is speculative, although I think we all agree that because of the southwest waterfront development, you know, we've tried to shop that Banneker site around, you know, to, you know, let me put it that way, offered it as a potential commemoration site, maybe an alternative to the mall, in many, on many occasions, and it wasn't appealing. But I think that the very fact of the southwest waterfront development is going to really rehabilitate this corridor and make it much more likely that there will be a commemorative site there. What we've asked the developer to do is to provide a meaningful connection from Banneker to the southwest waterfront so that people aren't taking a goat path down that hill. And, and poor tourists who get to the end of what looks like a boulevard are, you know, stunned and appalled that it's just a wasteland. So that may not be the ultimate permanent connection, but it might last for decades as Peter suggested. And in the meantime, we're trying to figure out other ways in which we can, you know, look at parking, look at other things that would accommodate the needs of the Park Service and the city, and yet, you know, allow these other important uses to be there. The, we don't know what the future building or buildings or space use will be there, but the fact that there are two very prominent view corridors preserved suggests that any talented architect could work with that in an orientation of a new building or monument or memorial and do very well.
Can I, can I just say that there are some issues with views from certain private properties? I don't think they're specific to the, to the development that's on the pier itself, but by no means do they obstruct the views of most of the homeowners in that area. I mean, if you just look at it on the plan, you can see it, it does not affect the vast majority of the condominiums and townhomes in that area, so.
Mr. Hart?
A question on the, the wharf area. I, I believe that what I'm seeing is that it's a public right-of-way for vehicles and pedestrians, but is it really a dedicated street, or is it still private development?
As, is it, will it be given to the district at any point? It's my understanding that they are, that it will be a private street, but it will be a public right-of-way, so that if you want to bike on it, you can walk on it.
It's an easement.
Yes.
I like the fact that we're allowing people to get up right against the water and have that opportunity to interact. And I appreciate the fact that the design is advanced, it's taken into account a lot of the sensitivities that were voiced by this commission at the last time we looked at this, and I have no hesitation in supporting this.
A couple of compliments. One, let's start with a compliment. It looks like per an article in the Examiner that there was recently an award to the Car Hospitality and Intercontinental Hotel Groups for a 260-room hotel as part of this $2 billion redevelopment, so congratulations on that. It's nice to go with a local firm. Is this the hotel that, according to the layout, is in parcel five, that's indicated as number one, kind of the square structure?
The Car Hotel is on parcel three.
Let me get down to it.
Sorry, it's...
No, she had a couple there.
Actually, this is...
You'll need to use the...
You need the, you need the mic.
You need to use the microphone, and please, note your name for the record, please.
Yes. Matthew Stanhock with PN Hoffman. The Car Hotel is in parcel three. It's a luxury hotel product, and in parcel five is two hotels that are controlled by the JBG Companies, a limited service and an extended stay hotel.
Okay, got you. On the, and the other congratulations was green space, 56 percent by my calculation, 15 acres out of 26.6, so 56 percent green spaces, which is highly commendable. On the view sheds from Banneker, both the primary view sheds as well as reciprocal from East Potomac Park and the Washington Channel, good, good progress, I think. Applaud you on the 30 to 50 feet that was given with the Market Square. Want to continue to press that if we could. Please, if you would, consider widening Theater Alley. Please, if you would, consider shaving off that residential tower on the structure adjacent to Theater Alley. For example, can you go to that, that slide that shows the, the north end of the development? Yeah, let me get my pointer here someplace. The little, the little wedge shape at the, yes, right, right there? For example, if that was either shaved off and rotated along the north side, the L-shaped north extension, you could easily widen the, the view shed from the Banneker overlook, particularly the elevated view shed, if you just shaved that off and relocated it to the north side of that. And then you wouldn't have to...
You said you...
Exactly. Just shave it off there and put it in the existing view shed. Let me see if I can show you what I'm talking about. Take it from there to here, and then you would have a view shed like this, along, along Theater Alley, along the axis of Theater Alley. Just put it right there, as opposed right there. Part of it is it blocks clearly the view. If you're in this northern residential space condos or whatever this apartment is, it's, you don't have a view. So the, the value and the price of property, property value in real estate diminishes because it's blocked by this. But if it's rotated right here, and then you have a view shed like so, just for your consideration. But this is clearly good progress from last. Joint planning, I think that was mentioned with the Southeast Eco-District planning folks. folks. There's some language in here. At this point, the language encourages developer to work with the park service on strengthening connections. I would defer to my Parks and our Commissioner and colleague if that language is strong enough as opposed to requires the developer.
I don't even know that it's necessary, frankly.
Unfavorable transitions to the park service properties.
Yeah, I don't have any interest in expecting it. I don't even know that it's necessary. I mean, I think that the dialogue has been constructive so far, and the developer seems quite amenable to doing many of the things that we'd like to see done, so I'm not.
We also met with some of your colleagues yesterday to talk about all these issues, so it's.
Exactly. I don't know exactly what's happening because of my involvement in the PUD case, but I know that it is happening, so I'm confident there.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Goni?
I'll just say, you know, this is a great project, important to the city, and I very much appreciate how much the design team and the developer have worked with the commission and the various members of the commission to accommodate the concerns that have been raised, and I hope that all of you will join me if I were to move the EDR.
Ms. Young? Oh, we do have public comment.
Certainly.
Mr. Steenhook, we have one speaker, Mr. Steenhook. If you want to take three minutes, you have three minutes.
I'm okay, I believe. Thank you, Commission, for your time. Thank you for your questions. We've enjoyed working with the staff of the National Capital Planning Commission, Commission of Fine Arts, Office of Planning, National Parks, the whole group. I look forward to contributing to that conversation going forward, and I think our plan has been greatly enriched by their contributions over the last 2007 or so, so.
Terrific. Thank you very much.
Thank you again.
Indeed. There is a motion on the table, and it has been moved to approve the EDR. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Agenda Item Number 5B is an information presentation, Beyond Granite: Forms of Remembrance and Celebration Competition. Ms. Kempf is here.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. Today, I plan to update you on a project in partnership with GSA, its Office of Planning and Design Quality. It includes a design competition and temporary installation in the Federal Triangle. We'd like to thank Nina Wright, Mike McGill, and others at GSA for their support, and today, we welcome Christine Ewing, the Regional Fine Arts Officer at GSA NCR. She'll be sharing the presentation with me. Although Washington may be most well-known for its permanent memorials, this project is a pilot designed to explore commemorative forms through temporary display. The permanent memorial is a powerful art form, and appropriately in Washington, it comes with boundaries regarding content and a specific process for site and design. But there are a number of ways, including permanent display, for the public to celebrate and reflect on contemporary issues of importance to them. As we'll explore in the presentation, temporary display may offer opportunity where the permanent by design does not. Together, they can both enrich Washington's public realm in response to public history and memory through art. Through a competition, our goal is to support a broad public dialogue about diverse forms of remembrance and celebration, to generate innovative submissions that would enrich Washington's cultural and commemorative landscapes, and diversify the palette of materials that we commonly associate with memorialization. Additional goals include to activate a public space that's perhaps overlooked today, and to help the public and sponsors visualize in a very dynamic way, design opportunities on a site in the Federal Triangle and off of the National Mall. So, how did we get here? The Framework Plan identifies sites and areas that can support activities such as celebration, commemoration, and other cultural uses, and we really see this current competition at the intersection of placemaking and those vital activities. The plan called for a range of opportunities, including temporary display, as a way of meeting those needs and enlivening the public realm. Our commemoration study found that cities in the U.S. and abroad have successfully developed projects that support temporary display in addition to permanent memorialization as a means of celebrating a community's history, important people, and other events, and we'll see some examples of those projects in the presentation today. In 2010, NCPC co-sponsored several events that began to specifically look at opportunities for temporary display in our nation's capital. And earlier this year at its retreat, commissioners supported developing a pilot project in Washington of temporary installations. So, since the retreat, NCPC staff has been working with GSA to develop a project plan, and just in terms of the broad strokes, NCPC supporting is doing planning support, whereas GSA will administer the project over the next several years. So, we're here to brief you today on our progress, get your feedback on our approach and our goals, and, but before digging in to the specifics of the project plan, we're proposing temporary display. So, what exactly does that mean? We have a long tradition in the United States of using temporary exhibits in the fields of architecture, urban planning, design, and art as a way of sparking innovative ideas and exploring new concepts. While they're experienced as a larger-than-life and awe-inspiring gesture, or something more intimate and built to a personal scale, the temporary can be transformative. The Ghost Bike, for example, is a simple roadside memorial in a place where a cyclist has been killed, but it's also become a universal symbol today of passing motorists to share the road. Tribute in Light is perhaps one of our most famous and well-recognized memorials today, and it's temporary in the sense that it's event-based. We've taken important strides in building a permanent memorial and museum in remembrance of September 11th, but in the meantime, this memorial was in place within months and provided immediately a stunning symbol of remembrance. Today, GSA and NCPC are developing a competition that more formally explores this tradition of using temporary exhibits as a medium that can respond to ideas about remembrance and celebration, which is such an important concept in our nation's capital. As I've already mentioned, NCPC and its partners have met this desire on a site level with the Memorials and Museums Master Plan and the Monumental Core Framework Plan. And with this current partnership with GSA, we explore form in addition to site. We took an important step in defining what a competition might look like at the 2010 Beyond Granite Forum, where we heard from experts in the U.S. and abroad about specific projects and programs that have worked in their communities. From the creator of Tribute in Light, for example, we sort of gained a technical understanding of what it actually meant to put together a project like this and pay for it in such a short amount of time, six months. We also heard from the Director of London's Fourth Plinth, a program in one of London's most prominent monumental and symbolic settings. The plant provides for temporary display on a 150-year-old plant that until recently sat empty because no one could agree on what memorial should belong there, and so they just basically didn't put anything there. And so, here are some examples of pieces that have been on display there for about a year or so. On the upper left is Ship in a Bottle, which commemorates specifically the Battle of Trafalgar, although in a bit of an unusual way. And this project really enables us to learn about a process that they used in London to select and pay for these works. According to Ms. Simons, who's the director, through contrast, these works have really embellished the permanent settings at Trafalgar Square. For us, one of the most inspirational aspects of this project is the level of outreach that they have incorporated into this project. There is a public vote at the semifinalist stage, so they have six finalists, and the public actually gets to weigh in and say what pieces that they would like to see. And then, also, there's a parallel student competition, so you have people of all ages weighing in on content, which I think is pretty inspirational, and we'd like to incorporate at least a level of this type of outreach in our project plan. So, with that, I'd like to turn it over to Christine Ewing to go over the project plan.
Thank you, Lucy, and good afternoon. We took some of the key lessons from the forum and the workshop in developing our project plan. One of the first steps we took was understanding the opportunities associated with temporary display. In addition to the examples we've already shown, the following slides include project types we've explored for the competition. Recently, Washington, D.C. added a road tattoo to its commemorative landscape that will vanish over time. Created by the sons and daughters of soldiers serving in the Iraq and Afghanistan wars, the participants helped to create a work of art that is both a commemorative work and an experience. Fully integrated into the cityscape, the piece blurs the line between sacred and public space. This aerial piece was installed for a month to commemorate the Biennial of the Americas. It incorporates fabrics that move with the wind and change color with the time of day. Here, we have the Architectural Pavilion in Millennium Park, which was installed for five months, period, in celebration of the Burnham Plan Centennial. One of the most interesting aspects of this project is in the interior. It featured a film installation projected onto the fabric interior. The film reflects Chicago's transformation from 1909 to the present and included voices of people throughout the region sharing their visions of the future. This is an adaptable work, so theoretically, an architectural pavilion like this could become a place that houses a number of different types of perspectives through different multimedia applications. Finally, some have considered the National Memorial Age Quilt as both an event and a memorial. Half a million people visited the quilt while on display on the Mall, and over 20 years later, many still remember it. What do all these diverse projects have in common? Well, they're all event-based, up for a limited period of time, with shortened display times also come shorter production times. Because of that, there's an opportunity for more immediacy and responsiveness to whatever issue the work explores. Many works have innovative materials, several explore the intersection of sacred and public space, and the public may be invited to help create the work. Without the built interpretive features like permanent signage, viewers have a different experience with the installation and the space. Finally, temporary display supports adaptable open spaces for current and future use. The space we propose for the display is the mid-block of 12th and Pennsylvania in Northwest. We selected this site because it is embraced by historic monumental federal buildings and located in the Federal Triangle across from the old post office. We see many opportunities to improve public engagement and activity in this space. Sometimes called the Hemicycle or the Aerial Rios Plaza, there are many reasons for selecting this site. It is under the jurisdiction of GSA and in the boundaries of the Federal Triangle Precinct Security Plan. The Memorials and Museums Master Plan identifies it as a future location for commemorative work, so we are pleased to sponsor this project for the public to visualize the opportunities at such an interesting location off the National Mall. Let's walk through some of the key activities associated with each of these major steps, starting with where we're at today in the pre-competition planning. We are working with a competition advisor called Land Air out of New York. Land Air managed the 9/11 memorial competition, and they participated in a number of cultural and parks projects such as Battery Park revitalization, and we're very excited to work with an organization that brings such expertise to our project. As part of the development of the competition brief, we asked the advisor to look at the project typologies that we've identified in this presentation, and to make recommendations regarding the strengths and opportunities of each approach in terms of the site and in consideration of our goals. Going back to the project plan, in terms of the competition, the framework for our partnership uses existing GSA programs that support both civic art and the development of the public realm in our nation's capital, including its form, function, and interface with federal buildings. We are drawing upon our Design Excellence Program to assist with the procurement process and the competition. We also have a strong art and architecture program where we contract with artists for public art across the nation. And our First Impressions Program recognizes the importance of the visitor's experience in our public spaces and plazas, like the Hemicycle. So, in conclusion, we believe that there are so many interesting opportunities at this important site in Washington, and we look forward to working with the National Capitol Commission on this project because both of our agencies share a strong interest in exploring the intersection of placemaking, public engagement, artistic forms of remembrance and celebration in our nation's capital. So, we welcome your questions, and thank you.
Thank you very much. This has been a very important initiative that we've been talking about for some time. Is the NEA involved in this at all today? Questions or comments? Mr. Goni?
I think it's a great project, and I strongly support it. I've said this to staff. My only small comment or concern is that it's in a bit of an out-of-the-way location, and that I think that the benefit of the demonstration that you're trying to make, you know, you may not get the, have the same impact as if it was maybe directly on Pennsylvania Avenue or somewhere else, but I do applaud the effort.
Ms. Prevention?
Could we get copies of your materials so that we could, perhaps on an agency level, adapt and adopt a similar program in areas that would lend themselves to exhibiting? This particular area, it's very limited as far as putting something like a fourth plinth pedestal upon which to display, because a lot of it is green. Is this, two questions. Would it be paved so that crowds could gather around and observe the artwork?
Yeah, one of the things that we've asked the competition, excuse me, one of the things that we've asked the competition advisor to do is to prepare recommendations regarding the type of infrastructure that we might need to support, whatever the installation will be. So, at this point, we're trying to keep as open a mind as possible to the number of possibilities.
Second question, is this a primary entrance, access, and ingress to this building that would need to be respected and preserved and not encroached on in any way?
I don't think so, but we're working with the asset manager, and we'll make sure and find out.
Okay.
Thank you.
Also, do you make road trips? Would you come out to our agency and talk about this if we were to invite you?
We would love to. We'll bring the presentation out.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Mike McGill?
I think this is a really intriguing proposal. We, at one point, were looking at redoing this plaza in front of the ellipse and moving the Benjamin Franklin statue there from the corner of Pennsylvania Avenue until we discovered the city owned the Benjamin Franklin statue. But we were going to kind of redo the plaza and incorporate some security measures. It is an entrance for EPA. It's an access route for Wilson Plaza, and it also has, over on the left side of the area, it has a metro station, elevator bank for the metro station. But that simply means that there would be hopefully more people going back and forth by whatever exhibits are proposed. It also, I think, would help further our efforts to make the Federal Triangle more porous and create more connections between the Mall and downtown by getting people to leave the Mall and look at these temporary installations. And finally, I think it helps, Kirk Savage made a very eloquent case for this in his book, and one thing that strikes me is that in reading about monuments and memorials, there's a tension between meeting the needs of the immediate people impacted by whatever event is being commemorated and finding a timeless design. Maya Angelou did a fantastic job with that at the Vietnam Memorial, but I fear that the World War II Memorial is more responsive to the wishes and desires of the survivors than to necessarily being a timeless design. And having a series of temporary memorials along this line, if we can create a momentum to do this on an ongoing basis, would be one way of testing out designs for possible future memorials, and I think that would be very effective and useful.
Okay, thank you very much. Agenda Item 5C is the next to the last. It's an information presentation, and it's on the Navy Installation Master Plan. It's an update, and Mr. Detman is back.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. Very quickly, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, the Navy's here to provide you with a. with a short brief on its efforts to update several installation master plans located throughout the region. You'll recall that the Commission has recently had some discussions related to DOD, some Navy projects, and regarding the lack of an updated master plan. What you'll see today is a product of some of the discussions that NCPC staff and DOD staff have been involved in, some of the very positive discussions in making inroads in terms of putting together a master plan structure that meets both the Navy's and NCPC staff's needs. And so, I want to hand it over to Mr. Kevin Montgomery. He's with NAFAC Washington to provide you with the brief.
Mr. Montgomery, welcome back.
Do you have any materials that we could follow along with?
I did not make any handouts. Hello, my name is Kevin Montgomery. I'm here representing the Naval Facilities Engineering Command, Washington. The purpose of the brief today is to inform you on our efforts to update installation master plans within the National Capitol Region. We're looking to inform the Commission and solicit feedback on the Navy's efforts to update installation master plans within the NCR, including the proposed framework for the master plans, transportation management plans, and NEPA documentation associated with those master plans. NAFAC Washington is currently preparing installation master plans for six Department of Navy installations within the National Capitol Region. Those installations are the Washington Navy Yard, Naval Support Facility Arlington, Naval Support Facility Naval Observatory, Naval Support Facility Carterock, the Naval Research Lab at Washington, and Joint Base Anacostia-Bowling. In extensive consultation with NCPC staff and including two DOD-level meetings with staff and Commission members, NAFAC Washington has identified the following path forward to prepare updated installation management plans for these six installations and meet the NEPA requirement associated with master plan review by the Commission. The IMPs will be composed of a short-term and a long-term development plan. The short-term component of the master plans will be based off the Department of Defense's military construction budget process. Each DOD department and agency develops a program objective memorandum known as a POM. The POM covers a budget year and four out-years. Milcon projects require congressional approval, and the money is obligated for up to five years. The short-term development plans will cover a five-year horizon of known development projects, which aligns the Navy's five-year development and funding process for construction. The long-term component of the master plans will be comprised of a series of components, including overlay maps consisting of transportation and circulation, ways forward, ideas in terms of long-term additions to our open space and conservation areas. It'll also look at our parking inventory, things such as our landscaping plan and our stormwater management plan. Components will provide the Commission context for long-term installation planning. Each one of these master plan updates will have a NEPA component, an environmental assessment or environmental impact statement, and the appropriate decision document will be prepared for each installation master plan. The EA or EIS will provide a detailed analysis of the short-term development plan. The EA or EIS will also analyze the cumulative impacts of the short and long-term development plans in conjunction with past, present, and reasonably foreseeable future development around the installation. Emerging projects will continue to be analyzed under NEPA on a project-specific basis. The Navy will reevaluate the status of each IMP at the conclusion of the short-term, five-year planning horizon. For purposes of this brief, we're going to use the Washington Navy Yard master plan to show data collection methods and analysis we plan to do for each installation master plan update. While mission-focused, the Department of the Navy strives to develop spaces that enable a high quality of life within the urban setting of Washington DC. The Department of the Navy is unique, as many of our installations have multiple tenants. NAFAC Naval Facilities Engineering Command serves as the landlord to these tenants. This slide's showing the various naval commands at the Washington Navy Yard. The figure next to it also lays out percentage of land use for each, for each area on the Navy Yard, the largest being administrative. We'll go into more detail in future slides. Anticipated growth at the Washington Navy Yard over the next five years is based on internal tenant growth and no new facilities. As you can see, over the next five years, we only anticipate an additional 375 employees being added to the Navy Yard. No major military construction, most will be as a result of renovation of existing space. There is some demolition associated with work being done at the Navy Yard over the next five years. There will be, there is no plans to increase parking at the Washington Navy Yard over the next five years. This slide is showing existing land use categories and how the Navy foresees the long-term land use being facilitated at the Navy Yard. We tried to incorporate a legend on this slide, but it got too small to really gather what it was saying. But what I can point out is that the blue area on the existing slide, figure, is administrative, and the long-term blue is also administrative. The brown on the existing, the far right-hand corner is an example that shows parking, and then our long-term outlook shows that potentially that space would be moved to administrative We collected survey data that allows us to analyze commuting patterns and better understand where employees live. This particular slide is showing employees by zip code. It's showing the major metro lines of transportation. It's also showing the major roadways coming in and out of the city. The different colors represent number of employees based off survey results. The white area is showing that zero employees, as far as our survey was considered, are commuting to the Washington Navy Yard. The brown, the light brownish color is one to 10 employees. The green is 10 to 25 employees, and then the darker brown areas are showing 20, potentially 26 to 94 employees.
Did you say that was the point who would consider commuting? What was that?
No, this is, we conducted a survey and got results based on where people were commuting from. This doesn't address commuting modes. This slide is showing commuting habits of Washington Navy Yard employees. It's showing total commuters by distance traveled. We found that our largest number of commuters are coming from 10 to 20 miles away. It's also showing here that we have a large number of dedicated drivers coming in to the Navy Yard. When we synthesized the last two graphs, we see that the 10 to 20-mile range commuters are the majority of our dedicated drivers. This type of information allows us to target programs on our TMP that will have the greatest impact to our transportation issues. The Navy is committed to implementing innovative transportation demand management policies through the TMP to reduce SOV trips to the Washington Navy Yard. The Navy is currently refining and redeveloping the following TDM measures. We're on board to hire a regional employee transportation coordinator. We're taking measures to reduce SOV trips to the Washington Navy Yard, and we're also heavily promoting variable work schedules. The Navy will evaluate the TMP every two years and update it every five. The Navy looks to continue its close coordination with NCPC staff throughout the master planning process for the six Department of Navy installations. We've listed out here the agencies and offices we also intend to include as we move forward with these master plan updates. Next step, we're currently planning on submitting the draft Washington Navy Yard master plan in the December-January timeframe and continue our work with NCPC staff to get to a final approved master plan.
Thank you, Mr. Montgomery.
I've got several questions, partly to you and partly to staff. As I recall, the Washington Navy Yard has more parking than the NCPC ratios would call for, is that correct?
That's correct.
And you said the Navy Yard isn't planning on increasing its parking?
No, sir.
But you didn't say they're planning on decreasing the parking?
That is correct. What we're hoping to do is through the different mitigation measures we're hoping to implement, we can get closer to that ratio, but right now, nothing's going to happen overnight. I mean, we, this is a problem that we're trying to address long-term, and we're hoping that after the five years is up and we're required to update this master plan again, we can show that the measures we've taken have made a significant increase in getting us closer to the required ratio.
Well, but like in the long-term, you showed an area in the lower right-hand corner that was brown in the existing but was blue in the, in the proposed. So that looks like you are thinking about eliminating parking.
It's potentially an option, but I don't definitively know if that is going to happen as of right now.
Okay. Now, second question, more, I think more for the staff. I'm curious why you would agree on a Navy Yard master plan being the highest priority for submission when they're only proposing to increase their staff by 300 people over the next five, 10 years versus other facilities like Anacostia-Bowling where much more ambitious plans are in place, and therefore more important decisions are going to come before the Commission that should be contrasted against a master plan?
I don't think today's presentation is intended to give the Commission an idea of when the particular installation master plans are going to be submitted. There was really, the Navy Yard was simply presented to you as kind of an example of what the overall structure of the master plan will be. It's going to be a short-term based on a five-year window that's tied to the military's budget process, and then the long-term, it's going to take a long-term look at what the particular agency wants to do with the installation long-term in terms of transportation, land use, et cetera. I think that your point about the Navy Yard having small growth and JAB potentially seeing big growth is a very good point. We can talk to the Navy going forward about which ones we think should be coming in sooner rather than later.
Also point out, the Bowling master plan was actually brought before the Commission a few months ago, so that's, that was something that was on the docket. Also, the Commission, over time, has taken a position regarding the Navy Yards in terms of completing the master plan before they see future projects. So that's been in writing for many years, so I think the Navy understands the urgency of getting both done, but I think they, they're working through this process, and I believe that this presentation is to show you that.
Other questions? Mr. Gony?
At some point, I think it would be helpful to know sort of what are the values or the objectives of the plan that, of the planning process that the Navy proposes to undertake? So the Commission has a sense of what it is you're trying to get to, you know, what changes you're trying to make, environmental sustainability, stormwater, employee satisfaction, retention, whatever it might be, so that, you know, we get a bigger picture idea of what you're trying to accomplish by virtue of your planning process.
Yes, ma'am. We have that information, and we plan to incorporate it into the master plan. So you will see that at the time we submit the draft.
Ms. Preventia?
I want to commend the Navy for their presentation. It's always helpful to have these informational presentations, and as you stated upfront, the objective was to talk about the process as opposed to the objectives of the plan, which are established in NCPC supplemental guidance. I noted too with interest that the scope for the slide number five meets and exceeds a couple of the NCPC requirements for master planning, so commend you also on that effort as well as taking to heart some of the previous feedback that we have provided here at Commission meetings as well as DOD-level meetings. Thank you. Headed in the right direction at the right speed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Montgomery, very much, and thank you, Ms. Preventia, for your continued assistance on so many of these DOD-related matters. Agenda item number 5D is our last information presentation, and it's on the Federal Triangle Stormwater Study. We have Ms. Tars here.
Good afternoon, Chairman and members of the Commission. My presentation today will highlight the findings of the Federal Triangle Stormwater Drainage Study, which was conducted by the consulting firms of Greeley &amp; Hanson and Limnau Tech. In addition to Greeley &amp; Hanson's report, the working group prepared a companion report that documents the context of the multi-agency efforts to address flooding in the Monumental Core, clarifies how this study adds to our existing knowledge about the June 2006 flood, and describes in greater detail how the working group contributed to the development of this study. We plan to release the Federal Triangle Stormwater Drainage Study and the companion report to the public in the next few days, and they will be downloadable from our NCPC website. As many of you know, the Washington DC region experienced record rainfall the week of June 25th, 2006, which caused extensive flooding that crippled the transportation, commerce, and business operations in the region. In the Monumental Core, several federal headquarters buildings in the Federal Triangle and the Smithsonian Museums flooded, causing millions in damages threatening the security of federal operations and preservation of our national treasures. Since the 2006 flood, federal and district agencies have committed time and resources to address the flooding issues in the Monumental Core, including several flooding studies. In June 2007, NCPC convened the Multi-Agency Flood Forum, which recommended policies to address flooding in the Monumental Core. The Federal Triangle Stormwater Drainage Study is one of many recommendations from that flood forum. In October 2008, DCOE, DDOE, FEMA, GSA, the Smithsonian, and DC Water committed to fund the study. Another eight agencies completed the working group. NCPC staff managed the project for the working group. My presentation has five parts. I'll outline the scope of the study, present the existing conditions, and highlight the findings. Then I will briefly discuss the important considerations that decision-makers will need to address and the working group's next steps. Our study area includes the buildings in the Federal Triangle, the National Gallery of Art, and the Smithsonian Museums immediately south of Constitution Avenue in the National Mall. The study analyzed how the sewer system performed during the 2006 flood using a flood model that combined surface runoff and the existing sewer system. Through the flood modeling, the consultants were able to determine the ponding levels for various storms. More importantly, this study evaluated and analyzed the viability of six stormwater management alternatives, highlighted in orange on the right column, and the effectiveness of an early warning system. This study only focused on area-wide solutions and did not evaluate side-by-side solutions such as floodproofing of buildings. So what do we know today about the sewer system that serves the Federal Triangle? The Federal Triangle served by the Combined Sewer System. During periods of heavy rainfall, the capacity of the combined sewer may be exceeded, and the excess flow, which is a mixture of stormwater and sanitary wastewater, is discharged directly to the Anacostia River. Two sewer lines serve the Federal Triangle. Both lines run along Constitution Avenue but in opposite direction. Both lines run along Constitution Avenue but in opposite direction and are designed to handle no more than a 15-year storm event. The Federal Triangle is the lowest point of a drainage basin that's 24 times its size. When it rains, stormwater from higher ground within this large drainage basin, outlined in purple on the map, flows down to the Federal Triangle through the sewer pipes and on-street So what happened during the 2006 flood? We learned that most of the rain fell between 9:00 PM on June 25th and 1:00 AM the next day. The amount of rain that fell exceeded a 200-year storm event. So if you think about it, the sewer system can only handle a 15-year storm, and we got a 200-year storm. So even though we found that the sewer system and the pumping stations were all working, it was not sized to handle such a big storm. The Potomac River was not at flood stage and did not contribute to the 2006 flood. And the 17th Street Levy Closure Project, which is under construction, protects the Monumental Core from river flooding but not from interior drainage flooding. So, so to address the interior drainage flooding, the working group and the consultants identified six structural alternatives and found that three are viable solutions for mitigating flooding due to a 50-year, 100-year, and 200-year storm return frequencies. The working group selected the 100-year design flood since this is the basis for FEMA's flood insurance program. To account for climate change in the form of more frequent severe storms, we also looked at the 200-year storm event. The first two alternatives, which considered low-impact development strategies such as bioswells and green roofs to capture stormwater, cannot mitigate flooding if they are employed as standalone solutions, but they can contribute to improving water quality in the watershed and reducing the amount of stormwater discharged into the combined sewer system. So the first viable alternative involves constructing storage tanks under the mall to collect excess water from the Federal Triangle and reusing that water to irrigate the landscaping at the mall. We looked at a range of storage capacities under the mall and found that these storage tanks are significantly larger than what NPS is currently constructing for their own The second alternative is a very straightforward solution. It's adding a pumping station that will draw water out of the Federal Triangle and discharge it into the tidal basin. The third alternative, also a very straightforward engineering solution, is the construction of a 14-foot diameter or a 20-foot diameter sewer pipe that will connect to the Owen Main Street Pumping Station near the National Stadium. For this study, the working group did not recommend a specific alternative at this time because they realized that there are other important considerations before the best alternative can be identified. As the table shows, the system-wide solution posed significant costs. We also know that large-scale projects such as the structural alternatives for a 100-year and 200-year flood involve lengthy time periods for implementation and complex political and procedural requirements that could determine their practicality. The fact that flooding can happen in any given year in the Federal Triangle study area makes short-term solutions attractive, but these solutions, such as side-by-side flood protection, do not solve the flooding problem. The working group also contemplated the viability of a hybrid solution as a less expensive way of mitigating for flooding, using a combination of smaller and less costly alternatives to buy down the flood risk. For instance, we could collect the first one and one-and-a-half-inch of rain through low-impact developments such as bioswells and green roofs, and then capture the stormwater in underground storage tanks, perhaps in the National Mall, and then using the existing sewer to discharge the remaining stormwater. And with the residual risk of flood, we can protect our buildings by floodproofing them. There are also ancillary benefits for some of the alternatives that are beyond the scope of the consultant's work to determine. Low-impact development strategies, although they may not mitigate flooding, have environmental and social benefits beyond reducing the stormwater that the sewer system has to handle. Multipurpose solutions such as using perimeter security walls as flood barriers for buildings could provide the best return on public investments. The working group recently used the predicted ponding levels for Constitution Avenue from this study to protect their buildings from potential flooding due to Hurricanes Irene and Lee. Most of the buildings have some level of protection already, but with the new data and more accurate models for the Federal Triangle drainage area, they were better prepared to protect their building from severe storm events, and they have a better understanding of the vulnerability of their facilities from future flooding. WAMADA is also using the ponding elevation data to design protections for their vent shafts in the Federal Triangle. With the understanding of the limitations of the existing sewer system, the high capital costs required for a system-wide solution, and the need for short-term mitigation, the working group decided to further evaluate their facility's vulnerability to flooding and determine whether they need additional flood protection for their buildings. On October 31st, 2011, NCPC, the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, and FEMA will be hosting a floodproofing seminar to offer training that explains how Executive Order 11988 applies to existing federal buildings in the floodplain, such as the case in the Federal Triangle. The Corps and FEMA will also provide tools to help the working group conduct a vulnerability assessment, as well as provide techniques for floodproofing their buildings. Our working group will also share the lessons they learned in selecting and using the type of floodproofing for their buildings. We are also offering optional site visits of the Smithsonian Natural History Museum as part of our vulnerability assessment discussion, and the National Archives for a demonstration of their self-rising floodgates. That concludes my presentation, and I'm available to answer any questions. And we also have our partner Roger Gans from DC Water to assist me in answering any of your questions.
Thank you, Ms. Tars. Comments on the study or questions for Ms. Tars? Mr. Hart?
Obviously, this is a pretty important study, and I am encouraged that you're looking at flood events that are beyond the 100-year flood hazard. It reminded me of my experience when I was doing Hurricane Katrina work after the entire Gulf Coast was inundated, and there were visitors from Belgium and the Netherlands that came out to witness the damage. And taking them around, the Corps of Engineers was showing these folks the levees, and the visitors said, "Well, you know, what event were you trying to prevent here?" And when the Corps of Engineers said, "We're trying to prevent the 100-year event," these guys were speechless. And so the Corps said, "Well, what do you, you know, calculate?" And they said, "The 10,000-year flood event, and that's not good enough." I think that the Corps of our government's, you know, agencies warrants a much higher standard than the corner store or somebody's house in trying to prevent damage and to mitigate any of these kinds of events. So the higher the standard, the better, particularly given the fact that these are extremely important agencies and artifacts that are in this area.
Comment about Katrina lessons learned. One of the best presentations I've heard was sponsored by Federal Facilities Council and the National Research Council, was General Russell Honore, who had a small role in that recovery effort. And there was multiple lessons learned, such as raising the standard to a 500-year events at a minimum, taking critical infrastructure out of basements of federal facilities and moving them to upper floors, those types of things. So I highly recommend his published report.
Mr. May?
Yeah, a couple of questions. Can you explain to me what the difference is between 200-year and 100-year and 15-year floods in terms of, I don't know, how many inches of rain that is, or how many inches per hour, or whatever? Because it's not, I mean, you know, the automatic reflex is to think it's, 200-year event is twice as bad as 100-year event, which is not anywhere close to the truth.
Roger, would you like to answer that? Do we need the book? We don't have our numbers right next to us.
Does it sound?
Yeah.
I think so.
Well, I can't answer with numbers. The events are determined by the frequency and duration, I mean, the intensity and duration of the storm. And the NOAA publishes that kind of data. You'd have to know both the intensity and the duration, and then you could figure out what kind of event it is, 15 years, you know, on the average, once every 15 years and so forth. Did that answer your?
No. Well, but relatively speaking, I mean, how much worse is it to have, I mean, just talk, let's compare it to the 2006 event where we had five hours of rain, right? The most intense rain.
I would have to look at the tables in the report.
So how many inches do we have in that event in five hours? Do we remember? Anybody know that number?
I don't, not without the report.
I don't have, yeah, I don't have the, that, for June 2006, we do have it in our report.
Right.
But for purposes of this presentation, we didn't want to get bogged down with all the numbers.
Okay, well, I did, I did alert people that I was going to want to get into the numbers a little bit at this presentation, so I'm a little surprised. But anyway, I'll just read the report when that comes out. How much larger than this, what you're showing right there, how much larger is that than what the Park Service is planning to build with the MallTurf project?
Yeah, so we try to compare.
Ms. Tars, use the microphone.
I don't know if you can see, there's a little sliver of yellow here, right in the street.
Yeah.
That's the scale of what the Park Service is building. And this is the scale for a 50-year storm, and add the purples for a 100-year, and then the red for the 200-year. So this whole, the combination of all three colors will be for a 200-year storm.
And are those of the same depth of cistern?
Ours is 15 feet deep.
Okay, I don't remember what ours are. Okay. And this graphic will be in the report that you release shortly?
Yes.
Okay. And then, last question I have is with the sewer option, adding a 14-to-20-foot sewer to the O Street Pumping Station, would that then mean that the O Street Pumping Station needs to be upgraded to handle the additional volume, or is there's capacity?
There's capacity.
Okay.
And the sewer would actually have to be a tunnel, because there's no way to get a regular sewer through that area.
Yeah, I could imagine trying to drop a 14-foot sewer into that whole route, that would be a problem. Okay, that's it. Thanks.
Mr. McGill?
Well, I'd like to congratulate Amy for really doing an excellent job of overseeing this study. GSA contributed $100,000 to it, and we were active participants in the process. And we were able to use the data that the study generated to prepare for Hurricane Irene. We listened to the weather forecast, they talked about how many inches were going to fall over a six- or 12-hour period. We then looked at the table from the flood study. We computed the estimated level of ponding that would occur in Constitution Avenue under a worst-case scenario in this situation, and we put 15,000 sandbags along Constitution Avenue. And so it was very useful.
And I wanted to, actually, Peter, I wanted to follow up if maybe that's really what you're trying to find out, like, if you're doing some future planning, how are you going to prepare for a 200-year flood? Because we did provide the ponding level predictions for all along Constitution Avenue for all the intersecting streets. So you could use that for then, planning for the future.
I'm less concerned about sort of the planning aspects of it, because when we venture down that road, we do it in partnership with either DC Water or Corps of Engineers, in the case of the levee, things like that. I was just mostly trying to get sort of an order-of-magnitude sense of these events, and that's not apparent from what you have here. But hopefully I can glean that from the report.
Technical question about pipe sizing, 14-to-20 feet, is that, we had a very positive experience at a project at the Pentagon to take clean water from the Columbia Island Lagoon, pump it through our heating and refrigeration plant, and the outfall section of the line at the Roaches Run Lagoon north of Reagan Airport. And we found that because it was clean, we could use fiber grass reinforced pipe, and we could downsize it because of the improved coefficient of friction, and we went from something like a 60-inch pipe to a 48-inch pipe. Would that also work for sanitary sewer? You could downsize? Can you?
With those magnitudes and sizes, not too much. I don't think, probably have to be reinforced concrete, and you could line it with something and get a little better friction factor and a little more capacity.
The reason I ask it is, we were, and we had favorable soil conditions, we were able to use the piping as the tunneling mechanism. So you tunnel and you laid pipe at the same time, so it was quicker, cheaper, faster, and more effective, and smaller diameter, just for your consideration.
This size project would be...
This is an awful lot longer run, so you probably have very good conditions.
And probably the type of tunnel that we're going to be putting in for our Clean River Project, which is almost, it's greater than a metro-sized tunnel. This one would be almost as big.
Anything else, other comments or questions? Hearing none. Thank you, Ms. Tars, very much.
Thank you.
Is there anything else to come before the commission, before we adjourn? Hearing nothing. Thank you for attendance today. We've had a good, a good, long meeting, a lot of good information, a lot of important projects covered. We will see you next month. The meeting's adjourned.